Okay, I think we're all here. I'm gonna move you to the top and welcome everybody to the April 6th meeting of the Eureka City Council. And can we start this meeting, please, with a roll call?
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Present.
Councilmember Ballard?
Here.
And Councilmember Bergel?
Here.
All right. Next on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and I will ask Councilmember Bergel, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today? All righty. You have to unmute Kim.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic one nation
under God
indivisible with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much and Mr. City Attorney Black, do we have a report out of closed session?
Mayor, there was a motion made by Councilmember Arroyo and seconded by Councilmember Castellano to add a close session to our agenda based on the facts of potential litigation and anticipated litigation, possible initiation of litigation. And so that motion was carried unanimously. And I believe Councilmember Bergel had not yet joined the group. So it was a four to zero to one vote. And a closed session was conducted and no final actions were taken in that closed session.
Thank you very much. So now we are going to move on to the mayor's announcements. And I will say that we are going to pull the David Josiah Lawson Oratory Festival. That festival has been canceled, but we will have poetry on the agenda in just a few minutes. I did not ask anybody to read the proclamations. And so I'm just gonna look up and say, Councilmember Arroyo, would you like to read National Public Safety Telecommunications Week?
I would be honored, just give me one moment to pull it up on a separate device. Great. And Chief Watson, are you here to receive that?
Yes, I can. I believe we were going to have our senior dispatcher Brittany Wilson present and possibly some other dispatchers if they were able to. In fact, there they are over there on the screen. I see three of them sitting in our conference room.
Oh, wonderful.
They will accept this recognition.
Wonderful.
But I do have a couple. Actually, go ahead and read it first. I may have something to add.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, we'll let you add something and the dispatchers if they would like to. Great. So this is a proclamation and recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is Sunday, April 11th through Saturday, April 17th, 2021. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas an emergency occurs, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Eureka Public Safety Communications Center. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety dispatchers of the Eureka Public Safety Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I Natalie Arroyo, on behalf of the Eureka City Council and our mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of Sunday, April 11th to Saturday, April 17th, to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Eureka in honor of the dispatchers whose diligence and professionalism help keep our city and citizens safe. Thank you so much for being here. And if you'd like to say anything or the chief would like to say anything, please go ahead.
Let's see if Brittany would like to say something on behalf of everyone first, please.
Okay, thank you, Chief. We just wanted to say thank you very much for the recognition. Obviously, 2020 was challenging for everyone. And the dispatchers of the Eureka Police and Fire Department rose to the challenge as usual with grace and dignity and professionalism. So thank you very much for recognizing that and for recognizing us.
Thank you, Brittany. Would you introduce those with you, please?
Tonight, we have Kylie, Julie, and Jade, our newest dispatcher, who was just released a couple months ago from the training program. We have Mary Clark that's currently in the dispatch center working and a couple dispatchers that were not able to make it today.
Thank you, Brittany. And if it's okay with council, I'd just like to add a couple of tidbits of information. Just to kind of frame how busy it is and the incredible job that they do for us and real life numbers.
Please do.
Thank you. So in 2020, the dispatch center received our process 28,395 911 calls. That's emergency calls for service, 87,966 inbound and outbound administrative calls. I believe those are phone calls. And a total of 116,361 calls overall, or an average of 319 a day, which is an incredible number for a center that often only has two people on duty. And that's actually down eight percent compared to 2019, very likely due to some COVID-19 pandemic impacts from that. And so 75,944 total incidences were dispatched at an average of 280 a day. Of those, 87% were police, 13% were fire and medical. And overall, that's down about 1% compared to 2019. So as you can see, these amazing people that do a job, quite frankly, I have often said I literally could not do, work incredibly hard and fulfill a vital function for our community. Again, many people don't realize that our communication dispatchers are the only ones in our region that dispatch all three disciplines, police, fire, and emergency medical dispatching, which requires an incredible amount of training above and beyond, which many other dispatchers have to learn. And we just really appreciate them. We're excited to see Jade join our team and some others, hopefully, in the near future. We've also just got done renovating and modernizing our dispatch center in terms of new console workstations, which I know that they're enjoying right now. In addition to the complete radio system upgrade, which we just finalized. So anyways, thank you for your service. And thank you, council and mayor, for recognizing these amazing people.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We always look forward to it every year. And now Councilmember Moulton, would you like to read the Volunteer Appreciation Month proclamation?
I was just gonna ask if I could do that. Coming from nonprofits, volunteers are just the lifeblood of getting stuff done. So Volunteer Appreciation Month, April 2021. Whereas volunteering one's time and resources has traditionally been and continues to be an elemental part of the essence and tradition of our country and is essential to its spirit and vitality. And whereas we are a community of people who thrive on helping each other towards the shared goal of a better life and future for all. And whereas volunteerism is increasingly recognized as an important partner in government and industry in doing the work of the nation. And whereas volunteerism is a vital fulfilling and enriching to the participants as well as to the recipients of services and should be encouraged for the benefits to all and the community at large. And whereas the city council recognizes the value of Eureka's volunteers, a dedicated group of individuals who are vital to the present and future of our community. Now therefore, I, Councilmember Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Susan Seaman and the city council and the city of Eureka, do hereby declare the month of April 2021 to be Volunteer Appreciation Month in Eureka in honor of the volunteers' hard work and selfless dedication to the city of Eureka, making it a better place to live and work.
I believe Chief Watson also brought that to us as he does every year because he has some volunteers. Do you have anybody to introduce for this one, Chief?
I'm gonna go ahead and see if Captain Stevens is able to unmute. He does coordinate our volunteer program and allow him to say a few words in if he has someone to address.
Captain Stevens, I hope he's able to unmute. He's got a big show tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you on behalf of our volunteers for the recognition for tonight. It's been tough the last year, almost a year and a half now. We weren't able to have our Volunteer Appreciation Dinner last April because of COVID. A lot of our volunteers have taken that time off because of health issues and just wanting to be safe. But it's really been lonely around the department, but I'm glad to say that they're getting their vaccine. They're coming back and just as all volunteers are, they've been a huge benefit to us. They're part of our family and we miss them and it's great having them back. And they do such great work for the city and the citizens of the city, all for free. And it's just remarkable, these people, how they give it their time. So thank you again for the recognition and thank you to our volunteers and all you do for the city.
Very nice. And I so appreciate that the chief thinks about this every year. And we have volunteers all throughout the city that help with the Community Services District and empower Eureka. And we have Project Eureka out there right now doing some beautification projects. We have folks who go and help clean up the streets. And we are very, very fortunate in Humboldt County that people give what they can. And sometimes it's a nickel, sometimes it's a dime, and mostly it's their time. And we are so grateful for every department and everywhere else in the community where folks volunteer. Excellent. Now, we have a couple of other things to talk about tonight on the mayor's report, neither of which have proclamations, but both which deserve them. And one is near and dear to my heart. That is, next week is the Week of the Young Child. That is where we get to celebrate young children, for one, and also the people who take care of them. And no year has it been more eye-opening for people with children and without children, that those people who care for our young ones are incredibly important for the development of our kids, for the just for the, for our community to continue to function so that people can go to work. And they were really important, essential workers from the very beginning this year. Some folks may not know that the city of Eureka has our own childcare center, little saplings. So I would like to give a special shout out to Nancy, the director over there, who does a fabulous job and who takes great care of the kids, most of whom have parents who work for the city of Eureka. So as our employees were coming to work, they knew their kids were well cared for. And that is the most important thing when you have a kid and it helps you do your job better. So next week, Thank Your Childcare Provider. People are gonna have Blue Pin Wheels, which is both kind of in recognition of Week of the Young Child and also National Child Abuse Month, National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And just so you know, if you want to celebrate with your kids, it's Kickoff Saturday, Music Monday, Tasty Tuesday, Work Together Wednesday, Artsy Thursday, and Family Friday. And on Artsy Thursday, we will have pinwheels all in front of the city of Eureka, so you can come in and enjoy them. So I wanted to make sure we recognized Week of the Young Child. And then I'm going to invite Councilmember Castellano to talk about our poet laureate program because it is also National Poetry Month. So Councilmember Castellano.
Great. And actually, I'm gonna hand it over to Swan Asbury, who's going to kind of introduce the poets. We have two poets here and we'll be launching the next round, but I'm gonna invite Swan to talk about that. Thank you.
You're muted, Swan. I saw you push the button. It just didn't work.
How about now?
You're good.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am presenting about our poet laureate program. This is a program that started two years ago. When COVID hit, we extended it from a one-year program to a two-year program, and that worked out well, so we're gonna keep it that way. We are officially opening the program for our second round and have invited our inaugural poet laureate David Holper and two youth poet laureates Izzy Unzinger and Harvey Mitchell to join us tonight. Harvey is unable to join us, but David and Izzy are here. Anyone interested in applying to be Eureka's next poet laureate can find the application and information on the Ink People's website. And now I'm gonna turn it over to our current poets to share a poem and/or talk about being the poet laureate. David, would you like to go first and then we'll have Izzy follow you?
Sure. I thought it might be useful for people to know a little bit of what I did during this two-year period. So I'll just give you a quick review so you know what kind of activities I was involved in. So one of the projects I proposed was a hybrid show, which involved 20 local poets writing short poems and then matching them with 20 local artists who created artwork for them. And there was a show in September of 2020 that Izzy Unzinger helped me to judge. And then we hung the show in the Ink People Gallery. And that was the first show that the Ink People had done to reopen the Ink People to the public. I had the web designer for the Ink People create on the poet laureate page an introduction to 20 local poets. So there was still information about them and their bios, photos, and links to their websites. I coordinated the Against the Wind Festival Youth Night in fall of 2019. And there were about 20 youth poets who performed at that. I gave a talk to the local Mensa group in January of 2020. I met with Izzy Unzinger and talked about writing one day. I gave a reading with three other local poets at the Humboldt County Library of Fall in 2019. I did a reading at Hsu in fall of 2019. And then both Arcade and Eureka, as the pandemic hit, decided to do window poems. And I helped find the poems for both the city of Arcade and the city of Eureka to put up in windows locally. A friend of mine, Annie Fricki, and I put together a poetry chapbook of 40 local poets writing about the pandemic called Behind the Mask. And there's a PDF of that on the Ink People's poet laureate page that you can download for free. And that was also submitted to Hsu's pandemic archive. I read a poem at the Humboldt County Office of Education's January 2020 Equity Summit. And then I worked on the education committee for the Eureka Chapter of the NAACP to put together the David Josiah Lawson Oration Festival. There just weren't a lot of submissions this year, so the committee is gonna work on having probably a face-to-face festival next year and see if they can get more submissions. And so that's somewhat, that's a pretty detailed list of what I was up to over the last couple of years, besides writing quite a bit during that period of time. So I brought a poem for you today. And a lot of the poetry that I worked on, given the pandemic, is pretty dark, but I tried to choose something a little lighter, sort of toward the tail end of the pandemic. So this is called "Dirge to Robin's Song." And I'll just tell you a little bit about this poem before I read it. Just outside my window where I've been teaching for the last year at my computer, there's a tree and every spring it has all these red berries on it and it just gets covered with robins and they just go into a feeding frenzy on it. So that's what this poem is about. "This morning, there was a robin singing just outside my window in the sun-drenched garden. She knows nothing of the headlines, the bad news, so many swimming pools of black ink, the 20 years of war we have fought in Afghanistan, the thousands of dead, both friend and foe, whose families no longer have much to sing about. She knows nothing about the pandemic, nor the 2.62 million souls who have perished, often alone, their loved ones, if lucky, staring through a piece of glass or a camera, unable to say goodbye. Yet she sings. She sings with a boldness that I can do nothing but admire. Her trills are magical. They lift the heaviness of my soul, which this long, dark winter has nearly forgotten how to sing, has nearly choked on this bitter bolus of inked and endured griefs. The warming sunlight lifts steam off the fences, off the leaves of the pepperwood tree, which shine pearlescent through this mist. The robin's song warms my tears, which fall almost unnoticed, except for you, who may, if you choose, catch these droplets in the sweetness of the robins enraptured singing. Do with them what you will." So just in closing, I want to say what an honor it's been to be the poet laureate for Eureka. I'm so grateful to the city council for putting this program together, for the opportunity to help promote poetry locally, to help lift up some of the local poets and to bring them into the limelight. Just this week, I got an email from a woman who works for a PBS affiliate in St. Paul, Minnesota, who was doing an article on National Poetry Month, found us here in Eureka and the work we've been doing in relation to the pandemic and interviewed me for a national article that's gonna be on nextavenue.org coming up on the 16th. So that's great that Eureka gets that kind of attention and that wouldn't have happened without a poet laureate program.
Thank you, David. It's great that you have been our inaugural poet laureate. And I think that this has been the year of poetry, not because, just because we have needed it. People have just not known how to express their feelings on occasions. So they can always go check out your page on Poetry on the Edge, see how other people are doing it. And Amanda Gorman was such a hit at the inauguration. And people finally started to say, oh, gosh, that's right. Poetry really can take you to another level. So it's been very, very cool. So are we gonna have Leslie introduce Izzy or do you want to introduce Izzy, David? It looks like, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Castellano.
Sure, I'll introduce Izzy. Izzy's still here. Just Izzy Unzinger has been one of our youth poet laureates. And it's just been so exciting to see all of the things Izzy has done with writing and with poetry over the last two years. And I'll let Izzy go ahead and take the mic.
I apologize for disappearing so suddenly. My family decided to restart the Wi-Fi without letting me know. One of the joys of online schooling, it has happened more than once, so I know better than to get all teenage angst on them. Well, as far as talking about my experiences, it is very difficult to sum up in words, even though summing things up in words is technically my job right now. But if you had told me that this is what I would be doing with most of my time as a high school student heading into college, I probably would have told you to shut up and get out of my house. I didn't start writing poetry until middle school, which is when many people would pick up that activity and sort of keep it as a forbidden secret hobby that they would never tell anyone about. But I kept writing, which was what made my experiences a lot more different from everyone else's. I kept writing about things that were important to me, things that were just something I couldn't understand or couldn't put into thought. So I put it down on a paper to better understand it. And as I got older, I realized that with age comes the need to find some way to process your thoughts that isn't screaming into a pillow or yelling at your sisters or doing something incredibly childish. And I found poetry, which was something that I was honestly astounded by and am continuing to be astounded by. With all the poems that are being created daily and the poets that continue to inspire me, it feels good to be a part of this community and to say that I, with all confidence, am a part of this community. And that's another thing that this role has given me, confidence. I don't know if you guys know much about high school students these days, but we don't have very much confidence, not in ourselves, not in others, not in the adults we put our lives on the line with. We don't have it. It just doesn't exist. So when I can say with confidence that I have it, there's something there. There's obviously something that I have achieved and can say with confidence that I have it. It's confidence. And it feels good to say that after years of feeling like I was nothing and that I was invisible to the rest of the world. So I want to thank you for this opportunity that has been presented to me. And this newfound world that I'm going to step foot into as an adult when I come and turn 18 on July 4th. when I come and turn eighteen on July fourteenth, so I expect birthday presents from all of you now that you know when my birthday is. Now, okay. I have a poem. It's long. Unfortunately, I don't usually write long columns. So we'll see how this goes, but I wrote this about a lady that I saw at the beach who was just running through the beach in shorts and flip-flops, and she was just having a great time until she fell into the ocean. And I really wanted to laugh at her, but I really couldn't because she was just having such a good time and it would be rude to laugh at someone. So this is called "Undeniable and Unchallenged." "She distributes all of her weight on the soft sand before her and runs, kicking up clumps of the beach, her legs on fire and her arms flailing about. Despite her apparent disadvantage in this cold environment, she soars across the shore, undeniable and unchallenged, past the shards of shell and scattered driftwood and through the chilled water that gently laps across her ankles. The shock of the temperature forces her to release a small gasp that is quickly followed and replaced by a pearl of laughter. The sun winks off the waves and she glows as she continues to run, hair across the horizon and fingertips outstretched as feathers are to wings. Coral lips curled into a curly white smile. She is beauty, undeniable and unchallenged. He joins her side, his cold fingers grasping her hips and launching her into the air. She loses traction, takes in a sharp breath, sharp insulted breath, and comes crashing down to earth once again. She emerges from the surf alone again. The foam of the waves licks at her feet and seaweed wraps around her torso in a passionate embrace. Her smile had wavered but not for long. She pulls herself onto the shore and lies in the sand beside a small sandcastle. Her fingers trace patterns and swirls and gives a slight sigh with the late afternoon breeze. She is certain here, buoys in the bay and goals against the wind, certain as a whisper, caught in a passing conversation. She is unattainable, unmatched, undeniable, unchallenged." Thank you.
Thank you, Izzy. And congratulations also. Just last week, you had a radio show with the Eureka Players that you wrote and directed yourself. So you have taken on quite a lot in the creative field this year. Councilmember Castellano, anything you want to say to close out on this item?
You know, just please, we'll be making a press release for the next round of applications soon, but I just especially want to thank Izzy Unzinger and David Holper for all that they're contributing to our community and to Eureka and it's, yeah, I have so much gratitude for all of your work and you just, yeah, thank you.
You left your speechless. So we are looking forward to our next round of applicants, as Councilmember Castellano was saying, and we send you on with our gratitude for the work you have done for the city in the past couple of years. And good luck, Izzy, as you move forward into adulthood. And with that, I will close out the mayor's report. And we will move on to the rest of our meeting, which starts with public comment. So do we have anybody here to speak on public comment that's not on an item on the agenda? And if so, please raise your hand and Assistant City Manager Powell will call on you.
Yes, I know Gary Lewis has requested to do public comment.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Just wanted to make a very brief comment thanking Kimbergill and Sergeant LaFrance and perhaps many others I don't even know about for helping take care of the situation on the library steps. Things have improved tremendously. Part of that had to do with convincing the library board to turn off the Wi-Fi at night, which sounds like an extremely simple thing, but was not easy to do. And I know it was a heroic effort and made a huge difference. I was just talking to a neighbor that was amazed how things had changed during the last week. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And do you have anybody else on your list? I did see Jeff Reagan had his hand up in the physical hand way, so okay, we'll go with Jeff Reagan next, and I see Benjamin Hess after him, so.
I'm Jeff Reagan, a resident of Eureka, twelve-year volunteer with the Planning Commission and currently serving as its chair. Approximately a year ago, city staff presented an idea of building multifamily buildings over underutilized city-owned parking lots to a combined workshop of the city council and planning commission. And while there were lots of questions that needed answering, there was general agreement that it was a good idea and the staff should move forward with more specific proposals so that vigorous public process could look at options and city could make a wise final decision. I recently learned from city staff that there will be no vigorous public process and that after the request for proposal was issued last July and the three proposals were reviewed by an in-house group last fall, the city council on October twentieth, after a one-hour, eighteen-minute discussion over Zoom during a pandemic and during a very contentious presidential election, decided to commit to the projects. Over the last several weeks, I've visited with several of you concerning this project and I've got some grave concerns. First and foremost, I'm appalled that most of you think that this decision-making process was adequate. I'm chairman of the Planning Commission and I've been asking staff on a regular basis about the progress of this project. And to this day, I have not been informed of a public meeting where the details of these plans are going to be discussed with the general public. I found only one article in the press that published the plans, and it was published the day of the city council meeting, the day you met. So compared to the effort made by the city to engage the public about our recent general plan update, the effort at public engagement on this project was pathetic. The general plan is a paper document with a lifespan of twenty years. And if we make a mistake with it, we simply go in and make some changes on a computer keyboard. But the lifespan of each one of these buildings is over fifty years. If we make design mistakes with these projects, you'll have to tear down tons of concrete, glass, and steel at tremendous cost to the whole city. So when I spoke with several of you personally, you affirmed that there have been ongoing public discussions about this project for several years. And that's simply not true. Most of the meetings cited by you were held before the plans even came to the city, before these specific plans came to the city. There were five meetings that occurred after the city approved the project, but there were exactly zero public meetings on these specific building plans between the time the city received the proposals and the meeting at which the city council, you, approved the project. So I sell real estate for a living. I work with clients every day as they search for housing. If you were my client and you told me a year ago the general type of home you wanted, and I signed a contract on your behalf for a property that you hadn't even had the chance to see or discuss with me, you would have and should have fired me. That's not appropriate representation. Couple more minutes, if I may.
Thank you. That's three minutes.
Very good.
Thank you. Benjamin Hess?
Sorry, I'll be speaking later. Sorry.
Okay, on an agenda item?
My mistake.
No worries. Do we have anybody else for public comment?
I see Emily has her hand raised.
All right, Emily, I don't see you, so just start speaking.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Emily Mossman Smiley and from the Peace and Freedom Party of Humboldt County. In a recent expose by the Sacramento Bee, messages sent between a squad of officers with the Eureka Police Department were shown to contain bigoted, violent, and sexist comments that speak to a culture of policing in Humboldt County. Particularly on January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, these officers threatened the peace and freedom of Humboldt County. The messages read, quote, "There's supposed to be a protest at the courthouse for the war on Iran. Confirm you have your riot gear, gas mask, helmet, and dude handle." Raina Sanchez wrote, I mean, end quote, Raina Sanchez wrote, quote, "I'll beat those effing hippies down," end quote. Officer Mehta wrote to the group, quote, "Why don't I have a side handle?" end quote. Sanchez wrote, referring to a police baton. On January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, the Peace and Freedom Party held a rally in cooperation with the Answer Coalition's Global Day of Protest against Donald Trump's assassination of Iranian general Qasem Soleimani. Soleimani was a beloved figure in both Iraq and Iran for his successes in fighting ISIS. The bombing of Soleimani killed multiple Iraqi officials and caused two million Iraqis to take to the streets in protest of the Iraq protest, and the Iraq government voted to expel all of US forces from the country. In attendance to the protest at the Eureka Courthouse on January twenty-fifth was the Veterans for Peace, mothers and their children, and activists from historically oppressed communities by the United States. The squad of officers with EPD threatened illegal violence against women, children, and veterans and people of color. It is unacceptable for every member of this squad who participated or remained silent. The first messages in the SACB expose showed the Sergeant Rodrigo Rene Sanchez personally owned an arsenal of military-grade weapons and tactical gear, including silencers. In response to a suspect accused of stealing this arsenal of weapons being released from Humboldt County Jail, Sanchez sent a message to his squad directing them to "face shoot that fuck," end quote. This is disturbing not only on its own, but in light of Sanchez's execution-style killing of twenty-five-year-old David Sequoia, who was shot in the head at point-blank range while he was on the ground. The Peace and Freedom Party demand that all officers in the squad, under Sanchez's command, be fired, and instead of hiring more cops, we demand that the funds be redirected towards a cahoot-style program that is being implemented in Oregon that puts mental health professionals in charge of nine-one-one call responses. Out of twenty-four thousand phone calls received by cahoots, only a hundred and fifty required a police presence as a response, required a police presence. This significantly reduces the amount of armed cops being sent into communities unnecessarily.
Thank you very much. That was your three minutes.
Mayor, we have Rainier's iPad.
Thank you, I see him. Go ahead.
I'm going to, yes, I'm going to take off from where, and we couldn't finish, going to find the Peace and Freedom Party's message. The Peace and Freedom Party of Humboldt County demands that the city of Eureka screen all officers for nationalistic, violent, sexist, racist, or bigoted tendencies to ensure that the Proud Boy-type culture is not infiltrating the institutions given license to kill citizens in the community. All officers promoting the racist counter mantra "blue lives matter" should be investigated for connections to neo-fascist paramilitaries like the Proud Boys, three percenters, oath keepers, and others. The racist counter mantra "blue lives matter" should be banned from use by Eureka Police Department, as well as symbols like the Black American flag with a blue stripe. Public service is no place for toxic authority worship. The responsibility of de-militarization of law enforcement falls upon the Eureka City Council and City Manager. The culture of ultra-violent, hyper-nationalist, white supremacist, and misogynist policing in the United States is a historical precedent set at the foundation of America. Colonial policing of stolen native land has always targeted Black, Indigenous, people of color, and vulnerable communities. It is on the colonial city government of Eureka to end this culture of violence and to protect the most vulnerable community members from the armed predators within their own institution. Fire the texting squad. Divert funds to de-escalation programs.
That was the end? Thank you very much.
That's the rest of the message.
All right.
Yes.
Do we have anybody else for public comment?
Mayor, I have a hand raised from Yamo.
All righty.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, I was just going to follow up the end of the message from the Peace and Freedom Party. We've collected a petition that's received about three hundred signatures in the last week calling for the firing of the texting squad, everybody who was in that squad, who received those messages, and especially Raina Sanchez and Mehta, but also everyone who remained silent about it for this long. Essentially, what happened was these really toxic, chauvinistic, ultra-violent cops threatened violence on the Peace and Freedom Party, on the Veterans for Peace, on women and children, and this is absolutely unacceptable. So we'd like you to look at, all the council members, to look at the change.org, fire the texting squad petition to see these signatures, calling for the firing of the squad and the diversion of funds instead of hiring more cops to that cahoot-style program. There's a program like it, you can look in Oakland. There's one in Seattle going on that takes the nine-one-one calls and puts health professionals in charge of facilitating this. There's also programs in Canada and Indigenous nations up there that are doing this kind of work to remove armed officers from every kind of response. So this is what we're asking. And we just want you to be very careful with the Capitol riot situation. The majority of these Proud Boys and people who have been arrested have been found out to be cops, to be ex-military. The leader of the Proud Boys is a longtime FBI informant, and they're members of private contracting organizations that have contracted with the United States military or corporations like in Standing Rock. They're not just poor Trump supporters. They're actually people who are very well-connected and have resources to do a lot of harm and damage in our communities. And there needs to be a process to screen for this type of officer who seeks to receive license to kill from the county government to be in these communities carrying deadly weapons. And that's what we would ask is please fire the texting squad and please start a program to keep our community safe from the people who are supposed to be protecting it. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Do we have any others for public comment tonight?
No one else has made me aware.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We are going to now move on to our next item of business, which is the consent calendar. And I will ask if anybody would like to pull anything from the consent calendar. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I need to pull item B two.
Okay. And do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move approval of the balance of the consent calendar minus item B two.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second on that?
One second.
All right. Can we get a roll call vote on that, please?
Yes. Councilmember Castellano?
Hi.
Councilmember Moulton?
Hi.
Councilmember O'Royall?
Hi.
Councilmember Bergell?
I think you unmuted and you didn't say anything.
Yes.
Councilmember Bauer?
Hi.
I took you out of order this time. I messed with you. Sorry.
All right, so item B two. Who would like to address that? I don't know if you're expecting.
I think, I don't know if I, I just think I need to abstain, but I don't know about our recusal or how that works exactly. I need to stand for the vote on this.
Oh, because, okay, you need to recuse yourself to vote on this item. Okay. Thank you for letting us know.
Councilmember Bauer? I'm going to put you in the waiting room and then once this issue is voted on, I'll bring you back in.
Sounds good.
And Director Gervin will be here to provide a brief report on this wonderful project.
All right, since we have pulled the item, Director Gervin, we would love to hear about it.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. It is a wonderful project. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So in April of 2020, the Public Works Department applied for a grant through the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Fisheries Restoration Grant Program, or FRGP, to study and plan for fish passage and habitat restoration improvements within a section of First Slough or Cooper Gulch. The project includes a lot of elements throughout that whole corridor upstream of Myrtle Avenue, crossing at Fourteenth Street and two additional upstream barrier removals. The grant funds would be used to complete the design permitting and environmental compliance. The grant funds would be used to fu, complete the design permitting and environmental compliance phases. And once completed after construction, the project would provide access to an additional mile of upstream habitat for some on it. In November, we found out that uh the grant application was successful for just under three hundred thousand dollars. And the grant will plu, will provide about ninety-five percent of the project costs with the city being responsible to match the remaining five percent or about sixteen thousand dollars. So staff is asking that council adopt the resolution, uh, accepting those funds and designating the Director of Public Works to sign on behalf of the city. And I should note that this is really possible. We've applied for FRGP funding several times in the past for this quarter. And this is only possible because of uh the work that we were able to do, taking advantage really of an emergency in two thousand and nineteen. And when that whole Myrtle Avenue Storm Drain Emergency cropped up and uh staff worked with GHD and with Mercer Fraser to really quickly uh open up that stream channel and improve fish passage, that was like the foothold that led to ultimately being successful with this grant application and hopefully in the future for additional construction dollars.
You are getting a lot of grants. You're gonna be very busy department very soon. Not like you haven't been already, but does anybody have questions or are they ready to make a motion to approve this item?
Mayor, I don't know if anybody in the public wanted to speak on this item.
Do we have anybody um in the public who'd like to comment on this item? Alright, seen none. Uh, Councilmember Bagel.
Thank you. So I move we accept a California Department of Fish and Wildlife funding for the First Slough Fish Passage Inhabitual or Habitat Connectivity Project for two hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine or whatever that is, and adopt a resul, that's why I teach, right? Two million ninety-four thousand, what is it? Two hundred thousand ninety-four dol, two hundred ninety-four thou, forget it, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Okay. And adopt a resolution of the City Council of the Eureka, City of Eureka authorizing the Director of Public Works as agent of the City of Eureka to sign and file all required documentation. I don't have my glasses on. I cannot see.
I'll second it. Oh, you can have it.
Did we have any discussion on it? And if not, then can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Moulton.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo. Councilmember Bagel.
Yes.
For yes votes, Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
Thank you. We can uh get him back from purgatory now. Alright, so now we are going to move on to uh our ordinances and resolutions. Item C one is Bill number nine ninety-five CS, the Animal Ordinance, and I believe we have Captain Stevens and Officer Villarreal here to talk about it or to give a presentation. So Captain Stevens.
Uh, the presentation is gonna be oral tonight, uh, mayor. So uh, good evening, mayor, council, and city staff. Tonight, we're before you to formally introduce the new chapter ninety-one Animal Ordinance. I'm here with Officer Villarreal, and we'll be available to answer any questions you may have following this short introduction. I'd be remiss if I didn't formally in this public setting commend Officer Villarreal for her tenacious work on this project. Undertaking a complete rewrite of a city ordinance at an experience level, at any experience level, is daunting and time-consuming. Starting the process shortly after being hired was the city is almost unheard of, but she seemed the need for change. It took on the challenge. She hasn't given up along this long road and has gotten us before you tonight for what, what I think, and I want to thank her for her incredible dedication, patience, work ethic, and the final product you have before you. I'm gonna take just a moment and walk everyone through the process um that has undertaken to get us here tonight and provide some perspective on the why. The old ordinance need to be completely stricken and a new one developed from the ground up. The bulk of the old ordinance was drafted in nineteen fifty-nine, more than sixty years ago. This code predated the Animal Welfare Act of nineteen sixty-six. There are minor updates done to the code until nineteen ninety-two, which believe it or not was twenty-nine years ago. Since then, nothing really has been done to the code in regards to updates. Eureka and our society have changed immensely over the past sixty years, and how we view our animals has changed just as much. So the need to draft a new ordinance that reflects our current lifestyles and is foundationally strong enough to carry us forward for the foreseeable future was important. We started off by simplifying the purpose statement of the new code, which now reads, "The purpose of this chapter is to regulate the keeping and handling of domestic animals within the city with an emphasis on public safety, quality of life, and responsible pet ownership." Additionally, we have clear definitions that provide a clear understanding and a baseline for animal care, allows the licensing of additional animals, and gives the city tools to work with animal owners toward responsible ownership. What we hope to accomplish with this new ordinance is a roadmap to responsible pet ownership that ensures public safety, encourages neighborly conduct, and establishes a minimum ex, expectation of care. We believe the ordinance before you tonight has accomplished this goal. But how did we get here? This process has taken a lot of research, conversations with experts, both locally and nationally, conversations with our local pet owners, our businesses, as well as our community members. In two thousand and nineteen, we brought a draft of the code to council and received a lot of feedback. We realized the ordinance wasn't ready for adoption, and we had more work to do to get it ready. Following that meeting, Officer Villarreal and I received probably more than fifty emails from the community members and organizations expressing their concerns and suggestions. We started adjusting the code immediately. We planned on a community workshop following that meeting, and that all got delayed due to several factors, but primarily because of the pandemic. However, on March ninth, we were able to finally hold a public workshop. The draft code was released about a week prior to the workshop, and Officer Villarreal and I spent the week talking to our community members, pet owners, and additional experts and resources, and started making additional adjustments as we learned more about certain aspects that we hadn't considered or became more educated about. The workshop provided us the opportunity to do a detailed presentation of the new ordinance. We're also able to address some of the adjustments we made during the week to let our community know we listened and that they would see most of these changes in the final draft. We also had the opportunity to take questions from council and from community members and provide immediate feedback. The workshop, in my opinion, was a huge success. We benefited from the interaction as well as we hope our community benefited from the engagement. Officer Villarreal and I would really like to thank everyone that has reached out during this process, as you have already. Have you really helped make this code a reflection of our community. Following the workshop, we made the final modifications and worked with uh Mr. Black and the City Attorney's Office to polish the ordinance presented to you tonight. Uh, one thing I do want to mention is just prior to this meeting tonight, I got an email from a citizen. I did an interview on the news last night, and I have to admit my mistake upfront. Apparently, I misspoke about the number of cats that are required before getting a cat fanciers license. Uh, so I'll throw myself under the bus for that right now. We could talk about it more in a little bit. But on that note, uh, we are here to answer any questions you have tonight, council, and um concerning the ordinance. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions tonight? Councilmember Bagel.
So I've been getting questions um about the um the fancier license and the inspections that go with that. So if you were to do an inspection, certainly you would have to have permission from the owner of the animals, right? And you would go and win the residence when they were there. Is that the case?
So essentially what it is, is it's just an agreement. It's saying that you, as a whatever fancier license holder, are agreeing that um if animal control needs to do a welfare check, that you'll agree to allow them on the property to inspect the animals for their welfare. Now, that being said, you still have the right to refuse entry to your property, and then animal control would have to then go get a warrant just like in any other circumstance. All this is, is it's just an agreement, understanding that the reason for the fanciers license um in part is to ensure that the animals are being cared for appropriately and that the parcel is sufficient to support the number of animals that a person has. And so it's sort of just an agreement between the city and the fancier, saying that they understand that animal control can do welfare checks.
Okay. And then just secondly, we've gotten a couple of emails about, and I know we had a long discussion about this last meeting, but I'm wondering if you could just speak to it briefly um about at-large cats and bird deaths. And I know that we had a long conversation about that um at the special meeting, but I'm curious. Um, I know we talked about not being able to really regulate outdoor cats. Could you just speak to that briefly?
So what we've done with this code, right now cats are essentially completely unregulated. What we've done with this code is start the framework to put in some guidelines for cat ownership, and that's really the first step so that um to ensure that are the animals are cared for appropriately and to ensure the safety of the community and the, the safety of the um ecosystems that we live in. Now, it's not really realistic at this point to enact, you know, to go from complete unregulation to requiring animal, uh, cats to be fully indoors, requiring them all to be microchipped. We want to be sensitive to the fact that that might be cost prohibitive for some people. Um, and it's not something that the majority of our um pet owners in the city limits have been doing or even it's not even on their radar. So it seems like it would be unreasonable to um just expect that of everyone over a short period of time. Ideally, what we'll do is uh with the cat fanciers licenses, we'll kind of create a um accountability for people with multiple cats. And we will um encourage them to keep their cats. You know, indoors, there's a lot of safety reasons for the cats themselves and welfare reasons to keep cats indoors, but we're not gonna require it at this time. Um, now I appreciate the Audubon Society's uh position on this. Um, but I also appreciate the fact that if we were to require all cats to be indoors, it could very easily lead to the mass euthanasia of a lot of cats. Not every cat is a good candidate for adoption. Um, not every um cat is going to be able to find a, a good home. Um, and so at this point, unless we were to do a really focused and like big um project to try to uh find a solution for our feral cat population. Um, it's, it's just not realistic for us, particularly with the City of Eureka only having one animal control officer. That would really overload both uh the animal control officer and then also the county shelter.
Thanks. I appreciate you speaking to that.
Alright, does council have any other questions? Councilmember uh Arroyo and then Councilmember Castellano.
So my question is kind of along the same lines, but I, I had honed in specifically on a couple of comments that um were around cats and rabies vaccinations. And that there's um if I'm correct, um that, that the ordinance doesn't speak to rabies vaccinations, but I was just looking at the public um comments themselves. So um could you speak to that and um if that might be, if there might be a mechanism for including that?
So just like we do with the dog fanciers license or actually with the current uh dog license, where to obtain that license, you have to show proof of rabies vaccination. That will be how the cat fancier license works as well. Um, and the same thing where we're incentivizing people to spay and neuter their cats by offering a discounted licensing rate for um altered animals. And so um that'll be something where, at this point, if you have, you know, three or fewer cats, there won't be a mechanism in place, but if you have four or more cats, there will be. And like I said, that's kind of laying the groundwork to encourage um responsible pet ownership and try to get some regulation in place for cats.
Councilmember Castellano.
Okay, and, and just so you know, Mayor Seaman, um Councilmember Bauer also has uh his uh little yellow, the, the emblem hand up.
Oh, thank you, because I don't have the comments open, or I don't have anything open to see it. Thanks.
Yeah. Just a couple, uh, how it, you know, and I believe you referred to this some at the um, the public meeting, but some folks commented to us about um concern around getting the different kinds of licenses. Can you speak to how easy or difficult it might be to, to get a, for example, an exotic animal license?
Yeah, so um the exotic animal license is a requirement once you get your eleventh exotic animal. Um, or really when you're planning on getting your eleventh exotic animal. Um, so you would just go to the licensing department, the same department that you would get your dog license from um or your cat fanciers license from, and um inform them that you're planning on getting an eleventh exotic animal and fill out the form. Um, they're really, particularly with exotics and non-traditional animals, um, there's not going to be a lot to it. There's not a lot of state law to support there being a lot of requirements. Most of those types of animals don't need, you know, specific types of vaccinations uh the same way that mammals do. Um, and so it's gonna be, we're, we're trying to streamline the process and make it as simple as possible and um make sure that it is still um a reasonable price and that we're not, you know, we really want to emphasize that this is not meant to be a revenue generator.
Thank you, and, and that makes a lot of sense. And I think some people had, just to kind of dive a little more specifically, questions around, let's say they're raising insects to feed to their three snakes. I'm sorry to go into hypothetical. You know, but, but you know, they have twelve insects and three snakes, you know, then would they need an exotic animals license and, and would there be an extra cost for that?
So we removed um the insects from um the exotic animal. Um, and then I will just really quick, if you'll bear with me, read the definition of exotic animal. That way people understand which ones will be included in the fanciers license requirements. Um, so any animal kept as a pet, other than those species defined in the section as household pet or livestock, which of those have specific definitions as well. Reptiles, amphibians, arachnids, birds, and of the orders, and there's a three different orders included, um are considered exotic animals. And then again, this section's not meant to allow endangered protected or wild animals to be kept as pets in violation of any federal state law and the absence of legally required permits. So if somebody has a state permit, for instance, um to, for falconry or something, that would be included, but that's not considered an exotic animal.
The short of insects don't count against the number of animals you're allowed to have under the exotic fanciers license.
And feeder mice as well. So for people who have feeder rodents, um, those are not, because so if you have, you know, a ten feeder rodents to support your three snakes, that wouldn't be considered a violation of any sort of ordinance.
Great. And I'll, I think I'll just I think my other things are just thoughts, so I'll, I'll go ahead and pass it to Councilmember Bauer.
Alright, go ahead, Councilmember Bauer. And you can always just raise your hand like this.
Oh, thank you. Um, I have a couple of comment and a question, I guess, we'll go with the question first. I, I received a inquiry about mini goats and the square footage kind of related to keeping these many animals. I think it's six thousand square feet, and I'm just curious how they came up with that, that size area for those animals.
Uh, so our mini goat and our mini pig um sections have been gone over by the Potbelly Pig Association of California and then the um miniature goat association, or pygmy goat, sorry, uh, Association of California as well. Um, and so there was a lot of back and forth that we did to find a really good common ground. Um, it ultimately, just like, um, you know, some people can have two bull mastiffs in a small space and do it wonderfully, and the animals won't suffer any sort of welfare issues and the neighbor's quality of life will remain high. It's the same thing where on smaller lots, like, you know, six thousand square feet, you can, you can appropriately care for and raise these animals. That being said, if there was to become, you know, any nuisance complaints or anything like that, then obviously we'd have to address those. Um, the, kind of the average lot size um that we were able to come up with, uh, we didn't really have an average lot size for Eureka, but in um cities of our, similar to our size and similar to um, you know, certain metrics that Eureka has, uh, the average lot size was about five thousand um square feet, and so we were trying to keep it so that the average homeowner could have access to these pets. We didn't want to um, you know, create something where if you, you know, aren't, you know, you don't have an average-sized lot, you, you can't have one.
Yeah, so, so we're not okay with five thousand? I'm just, just wondering.
Um, there, there were some questions, the mini pig and the mini goats particularly, do you have some species-specific requirements that'll require that they forage and that they move around and that they have um enough room to exhibit those species-specific behaviors? Um, and so in conjunction with other experts, we kind of landed on six thousand.
Fair enough. Thank you. Um, and then second, I wanna.
The comment, you have a comment? We'll hold on to that till after a public comment. Questions and then it's comments.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna uh say. Yeah, well, I was just gonna uh say something to Councilmember Vigel. You know, this was more of a, I guess it is a question. Related to cats. Um, I think cats should be registered. I mean, we're essentially releasing a thousand or so little tiny cute predators across the landscape. With, you know, a lot of repercussions. And so um, I guess the question is, when can we do that? Or when can we explore that as as a, just like a responsible dog owner, responsible cat owner? You know, I think needs to bear the responsibility of of what the pets do. And so I I, you know, maybe it's something too that we could even, part of the registration includes. A fee that is used to restore bird habitat within the city so that there's kind of a mitigating. Nature to letting your pet, you know, ru- roam freely. So I don't know what you think about how we could work that in over the next year or two.
I think that was a question, if you guys.
Sorry, that's a question.
I mean, like I said, this is um, this is step, I mean, you you could see this, I should say. It wasn't really meant that way. But you could see this as step one, to start getting people on the track to start registering their pet. And um, you know, from an animal control standpoint, I think you have a lot of really valid points. Um, cats are predators, cats are more likely to engage with animals that carry rabies than even your average dog. Um, so it absolutely makes sense to ensure that they're all rabies vaccinated, that they're kept inside so that they're not decimating local populations of. Uh, other animals, particularly birds. So I think they're all absolutely valid points. Where we start to um have issues is just in finding the best practical enforcement. Application, education of cat ownership um in a municipality. And I can tell you, a lot of different cities have tried a lot of different things. They did a lot of research on this and looked at a lot of different codes. Talked to a lot of other animal control officers to say, hey, this code looks really great, and a lot of them were like, yeah, it's great, but we literally cannot enforce it. And so I didn't want to put anything in the code that was either going to lead to mass euthanasia of animals. Um, without having some sort of plan to divert that, or that was gonna put our animal control department in a position where they couldn't enforce. Um, aspects of the code, or um it was gonna overwork uh our current uh animal control department. So um, that's kind of where we're at. Like I said, you have really valid points. I agree with a lot of them. Um, it's just a matter of implementation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other questions from council before I turn it over to public comment? All right, um, if you would like to make a public comment, you can either raise your hand. Down below, or you could raise your hand. If I could see it, because we have a lot of people on the screen, the old fashioned way, so using the reactions is the best bet. Councilmember, I mean, Assistant City Manager Powell, do we have any that you can see?
No, I'm looking through and there's no one with a virtual hand or. A uh actual hand at this point.
That's what I saw, so I will bring it back then for comments. Does uh council, uh comments and a motion? Councilmember Castellano.
Um, let's see, just comments, I I do think. It would be nice to, whether now or or soon, um, to have some sort of language. About rabies vaccines for cats, you know, within the ordinance itself. You know, it, whether or not people register, um it still seems like we want cats to have rabies vaccinations. And then I guess I'm wondering, maybe this, maybe I had a question. It just in terms of the uh the language around where it's, you know. And I understand what you mean and that you're not going to force entry onto anyone's premises, you know, without a warden warrant, but. I just wonder if it may alleviate some public concern if it said something about request entry onto premises. You know, with the idea that, you know, if if concerns weren't addressed, you know. A a warrant would follow, or you know, I don't know, I guess that's just, I I kind of wonder around that. A lot of people. Don't understand that when they read the ordinance, so.
Any other comments? Or a motion, Councilmember Arroyo?
Um, one thing I haven't looked into, it's like, how how do, how, what is the relationship? And this, this is a question, I guess, that I didn't raise earlier, but what is the relationship between animal control and code enforcement? Um, where does, you know, when it, when something becomes a clear. Issue with code enforcement, health and sanitation issue. Um, you know, impacting neighbors' property, that kind of thing. Um, how how does that kind of play out?
So I think they, I'm sorry, I I think they kind of work hand in hand, and we've had this instance uh several times with different types of circumstances. So the animal side of the house is what animal control deals with. The conditions of the house, the conditions of the yard, then that falls under code enforcement side. And we've approached a lot of these situations from a dual approach with both of us going out, dealing with the problem. And coming up with resolutions both for the animals and for the homeowner, which then, you know, resolves the problem for the community and for the neighbors. So uh we often refer back and forth, e- even as of today, a case we worked today, we worked hand in hand through this entire case today. Uh, so it's something that happens quite often, and we have a great wor- working relationship with code enforcement.
We're very, um, we refer uh concerns to each other all the time. We have a really, really good working relationship. Um, and a a lot of in, I got a lot of input from code enforcement on uh the ordinance. Uh, while it was kind of being formulated over the last few years. Um, so it's definitely something that it's, I would say it's a partnership between the two.
Great, great. And then I just had an additional comment. Um, that's great to hear, and it does, I could could see how there's a lot of overlap. Uh, after thinking about this rabies issue and and the enforceability. I guess I'm I'm sort of with Councilmembers Bauer and Castellano on wanting there to be. The expectation set that cats be vaccinated for rabies. I mean, I think uh. Not the greatest analogy, but a possible analogy is like we don't always have enough personnel to do traffic enforcement throughout the city. But we still have um posted speed limits and um, you know, people are still held to that standard. Um, of the, you know, behavior on a roadways, at least um, they should be held to that standard. So even if no one's looking, that's that's the expectation, right? Um, and so a. Part of me feels like we should go ahead and um mandate rabies vaccination. Um, because that sets the stage for like, you know, if people are like, what do I need to do to be a responsible pet owner? I bet you a lot of people are not looking at the city's animal code to figure out what they need to do as a responsible pet owner. But I don't necessarily think it would hurt to set the expectation that um cats be vaccinated for rabies and. And that allows the veterinary community to say, like, did you know that it's required in the city of Eureka that your cat be vaccinated for rabies? So that's my thinking on it. To me, it's more of a um. Letting that expectation like disseminate in the community, particularly to vets and people who are involved in animal care in any way. Um, with the hope that people will um vaccinate their animals, at the very least for rabies. Um, I don't know enough about other um diseases that cats carry to know whether. There should also be something else, but rabies seems like um minimum, especially since in the time I've lived in Humboldt, we've had like several. Several rabies outbreaks. I don't know if y'all remember all the foxes, the the rabid foxes of Humboldt. But um I would like to not see see that come back. So um those are my thoughts about the rabies vaccination cats.
Um, do you have any other comments, or would you like to make a motion and add that to Councilmember Castellano?
Um, uh, yeah, I'll I'll make that motion, but first I also just want to say, um. You all, you both have done a tremendous job working on this. It's, it's quite impressive how much time and consideration you've you've given to it, so. So thank you so much um for all of that. I I know it it has been a long process. So I would like to make a motion that is to waive full reading, read by title only and introduce bill number nine nine five dash C S. An ordinance of the city of Eureka repealing and replacing chapter 91 animals. And include a provision that all cats should receive a rabies vaccination. Within the or, within. The bill.
Do I have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, and do we have any further discussion on the item? Now, can we get a roll call vote, please? Oh, wait, Councilmember Moulton has a discussion.
Uh, Councilmember Castellano brought up adding possibly a few words to the section where it says an animal control officer made any time. Go onto somebody's property, and I understand that all happens under state law and everything else. Um, but I agree, adding a tiny bit of clarification there would alleviate a lot of people's concerns. Also that it is complaint based, so um. In section, the dog fanciers license and the cat fanciers license section, uh as well as the exotic animal fanciers license section on the fourth sec. On the fourth point, where it says an animal control officer and so forth. I would like to see added in front of that, if a complaint is made. Then an animal control officer can so forth um ask to be. Um, enter onto the premises. Does that make sense?
Are you proposing a friendly amendment?
Is that what I'm doing?
I believe so.
Okay, a friendly amendment to those three sections, uh the the fourth point on each section. That um says at first. If a complaint is made, an animal op, an animal control officer? Or would that be too restrictive? Should an animal control officer be allowed to go and inspect or ask to inspect if no complaint is made?
Uh, Captain Stevens.
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to have a point on that. Um, there may be a time when we have somebody that applies for a a dog fanciers license that has 30 dogs. And they're gonna try to get that license, and they may live in a a regular sized lot in the city of Eureka. And without the ability, while there's no complaint on that, without the ability to go out and check the residence. Uh, as far as the inspection goes, to see why do they want 30 dogs and how can they, you know, safely and humanely house 30 dogs in the city lot? Uh, we've taken that opportunity away to follow up on that to ensure we're not already creating an incident where complaints are gonna be made. But while I agree, most of our enforcement is complaint based. Um, there will be circumstances, I believe, where somebody may apply for a license that seems to be out of sorts for the area they're trying to put. Their fanciers license where they may live, and by taking that away, we will have, we won't have the ability to even go out and try to make contact and conduct the inspection prior to issuing the license.
And then, okay, I can appreciate that circumstance. Thank you for that. Um, what about uh may at any time during those hours ask to enter onto the premises? Because I understand that is what the reality is. It's not the animal control officers can simply enter the premises. They do have to ask, right?
So, I mean, essentially what that means is animal control is gonna be, or uh an a- law enforcement officer, for some reason, there's no animal control available. Um, would be knocking on the door and and asking to enter. What the fanciers license is, is an agreement. So in the fanciers per, in the application, they're going to sign that I, in getting a fanciers license, I'm agreeing. That when animal control, you know, shows up to view the animals and ensure that their uh welfare is being kept as a priority. Then, you know, they're they're agreeing to allow that to happen. It's it's sort of um. It's just an agreement in advance between the fa- the fanciers uh license holder. And the city saying, as part of getting this fanciers license, I'm agreeing that yes. If there's a in a welfare issue, you can come take a look at the animals. It's not really meant to be, um, you know. Punitive, or, you know, we're not showing up with SWAT to, you know, knock down someone's door because they might have. One additional dog or some something like that. It's really just, and I mean, ultimately, the way that animal control works right now is. Animal control officer will knock on the door and say, hey, I received X Y Z complaint. Would you mind if I come in and take a look, just so I can cross my Ts, dot my Is, and make sure everything's okay? And that's essentially how it is. It's not going to be like pound, 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 you know, you signed this, you have to let us on. That's really not. Not the spirit that is written in, and that's really not the the wording that's in there, isn't stating, saying that either, so.
Councilmember Bauer, I saw your hand to go up.
Maybe I was scratching my head.
Okay. Councilmember uh Arroyo, and then uh we'll let the chief speak after you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, the um. Our our EPD personnel may want to respond to this too. I guess now this opens up this question for me. Um, not so much about the fanciers permits and the the wording around the um. Permission or or, you know, requirement to allow entry, but in general, if there is a likes. The kind of thing you see on Animal Planet, where you're like, these dogs are being um starved to death or. Um, the snakes got out, or something that's um like an urgent um, an immediate threat. I was just sort of reviewing the language and thinking about, um, like, if the animal is a hazard to other people. There's clear language around that, but could you point me to anything that would allow like an immediate um urgent? Entry to protect the animal?
There's already language like that in our state law that allows, whether it's a, so for instance. Animal control can seize an animal for failure to provide adequate care, and then there is a hearing process to determine whether the animal was seized. Uh, appropriately, whether it was seized in error, whether the owner can uh fix the issues and provide appropriate care. And then if um an animal is an immediate public safety hazard, they can also seize the animal on or. You know, secure the property or whatever's necessary in that moment, and that would fall under exigent circumstances. So it wouldn't be, um, it wouldn't be uh only, you know, the, from eight to six P M, Monday through Friday or whatever. That would be something that could happen 24/7 if it was a danger to the animal or danger to the public.
Thank you.
Chief, you had something to add?
Yeah, I just thought, um, obviously that the the governing law is going to be the Fourth Amendment. And any California specific laws concerning search and seizure always. If council feel more comfortable, there's no reason we can't add a line in there that says something to the effect. And perhaps the city attorney can help uh massage the the sentence a little bit, but. Nothing in this section is intended to supersede existing uh Fourth Amendment or state law restrictions regarding search and seizure. Or something like that, because that is the gold standard that we have to hold to, then it's in writing.
Would that make a Councilmember Moulton?
Absolutely, and I understand that that that's how these these layers work, uh and I, but I also like read this and I had to ask. Um, and I have multiple people asking me that exact same question, so I think a a line in there that clarifies. Uh, something that we all know, that this is happening under those laws, would um alleviate that concern for me.
So we do have a motion and a second, and that is your friendly amendment, is the new adjusted uh. Councilmember Castellano, do you uh adopt? How do you feel about that amendment?
I accept the friendly amendment.
All right, Councilmember Arroyo. Are you the second? Um, oh, no, was it Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah.
All right, we bounced around.
I'm still second.
Does that work with you? Okay. Okay, so any other further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Castellano.
I.
Councilmember Moulton.
I.
Councilmember Arroyo.
I.
Councilmember Bauer.
Bye.
Councilmember Vigel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Excellent, thank you, and I would like to also say that um we really do appreciate. All the time you took to make this as um. Is agreeable to everybody as possible. I don't know that I've seen that kind of back and forth with the the public like that, so. And we will move on to item D one, which is the Housing Element Annual Progress Report. I'm quite excited to hear about this. And I believe Housing Coordinator Kristen Ramirez is gonna start this presentation.
Yes, Kristen Raymond here.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor and City Council, this evening I am starting our presentation on the City of Eureka's 2019, 2020. Housing Element Annual Progress Report, also known as the APR. Our housing element is one of the essential elements of our general plan. It ensures that we are adequately. It ensures that we are adequately addressing the housing needs and demands of our community. Every year, we are required to prepare and submit an annual report to review the progress of the Certified Housing Element Goals, Objectives, and Achievements in meeting our RENA numbers. The information is based on the prior year's progress and showing if we are on track. APRs are due on April first and have to be submitted to the Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. From here, I am turning the presentation over to our Principal Planner, Kristen Getz.
Thank you, Housing Coordinator, Coordinator Raymond. Let me share my screen here. So I'm going to throw some numbers at you this evening. So good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to thank Housing Coordinator Raymond and also Finance Director Millar, who helped with creation of a lot of the graphs and charts that are in the in the presentation tonight, so just wanted to say thanks to them. So. The state housing element law requires the city to accommodate a share of the total projected housing needs for Humboldt County for the planning period, which is also called a cycle. This share, called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA, is important because state law mandates that each jurisdiction provides sufficient land to accommodate a variety of housing opportunities for all economic segments of the community. Compliance with this requirement is measured by the jurisdiction's ability to provide adequate. Land with adequate density, sorry, and appropriate development standards to accommodate the RENA. The Humboldt County Association of Governments, as the regional planning agency, is responsible for allocating the RENA to individual jurisdictions in the region. For the current housing element, which is the sixth cycle and covers two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-seven, the jurisdictions within Humboldt County have been allocated a total of three thousand three hundred and ninety-two dwelling units. The total RENA allocation for the county is distributed across the four housing income levels, which include very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income. HCO then assigns the RENA to each incorporated city and the unincorporated portion of the county, that's shown here on the chart on your screen. And in case you were interested, here's a graph showing the percent of the total RENA that's allocated to each jurisdiction, with Humboldt County having the highest percentage, City of Eureka being second, City of Arcata third, and Fortuna fourth, and the rest after The City of Eureka has been allocated arena of RENA of nine hundred and fifty-two units, and those are divided into four income levels as follows. Two hundred and thirty-one very low income units, a hundred and forty-seven low income units, one hundred and seventy-two moderate income units, and four hundred and two above moderate income units. And for anyone who doesn't like pie, here's a bar graph that actually shows the same Finally, this graph shows the City of Eureka's RENA allocation in orange as compared to the overall countywide allocation in blue, and again, this is by income level. So Eureka's Housing Element divides sites available for development of housing into two categories. Housing development on non-site specific parcels could be created through construction of accessory and or junior accessory dwelling units, small lot and conservation subdivisions, and division or conversion of existing space. These types of development can take place on any lot, and the lots are not specifically identified in the housing element. The other type of site that is available for housing development is site specific. These are sites that have been identified by parcel number in the housing element, and they are currently either vacant or non-vacant sites, and these include the sites with the housing on publicly owned lots. However. In the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty period, there has not been any development on the site specific sites. For each of the eight years of the housing element, the goal is to create twenty units for each type of non-site specific development, either ADUs subdivisions or conversion of existing existing space, with the ultimate goal being to create a total of four hundred and eighty dwelling units on non-specifics parcels by two thousand twenty-seven. During the two thousand nineteen. And two thousand twenty twenty period, a total of twelve accessory dwelling unit building permits were issued on non-site specific parcels, but no building permits were issued for parcels that had been subdivided or converted. If we assign the non-site specific targets from the housing element for the entire period covered by the housing element to an income level, we have a hundred and sixty accessory dwelling units, a hundred and thirty-four small lot concert or conservation subdivision units, and a hundred and forty divisions or. Divisions of existing. For the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty period, we issued building permits for a total of twelve ADUs in several income levels. However, there were no small lot or conservation subdivisions. The Annual Progress Report also asks how many dwelling units have received all reviews necessary to be able to approve a building permitted application, also known as entitlements. And in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we approved design review for the Providence Supporting Housing Project, which proposed a total of forty-nine units, forty-eight of which were low, very low income, and one above moderate manager's unit. Although they have received their entitlements, they have not yet applied for their building permit, and so I would anticipate that that would be coming sometime later this year. Altogether, including the ADUs we've previously discussed, the city has issued building permits for a total of nineteen dwelling units in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. But if we look at the number of dwelling units that have actually received a certificate of occupancy in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, meaning from a building and zoning standpoint, they're ready to be occupied, a total of ninety-two new dwelling units were created, with fifty low income units, fifteen moderate income units, and twenty-seven above moderate income units. Finally, if we take those ninety-two units that were created and ready for occupancy and break them out by the income levels, and then compare them to the total RENA goal for each income level between now and two thousand twenty-seven, we still need to develop two hundred and thirty-one very low income units, ninety-seven low income units, a hundred and fifty-seven moderate income units, and three hundred and seventy-five above moderate income units. That leaves an overall total of eight hundred and sixty dwelling dwelling units remaining. The Link Housing. Projects will show in the Annual Progress Report probably in. Two thousand twenty-one, late two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two, when they receive their building permits, and then eventually they will receive their certificates of occupancy and show up in that Annual Progress Report. So I am happy to answer any questions if I can. And Kristen is still with us also.
Councilmember Moulton.
Would you mind reminding us how many units there will be at the different Link Housing, the potential projects there?
There will be a total of a hundred and seven units. One manager unit will be at each location, and. Off the top of my head, thirty-two units, I believe, at Myrtle and Sunny, forty at Eighth and G, and thirty-five at. Six and M.
Thank you. I kept thinking it was a hundred at each one, and I was crazy.
But it's not, no.
Councilmember Royo.
Thank you very much, Principal Planner Getz. I just wanted to ask about the Housing Element Progress Report for implementation that we received by email. It's kind of dense, but I wanted to see if there was anything you you wanted to highlight. You know, this really goes into, just for for public who may be watching, it goes into all of the things we will do to advance our goals for housing, including code changes and cooperative efforts with other agencies and relationships with developers. Coming up with housing strategies for special needs, a lot of, a lot of different things. So I was wondering if there's anything you, you wanted to highlight from that implementation report?
Thank you, Councilmember Royo. I think that just overall, we've done a great job with the pandemic, with having less staff than we had when the housing element was originally adopted by council and certified by Housing and Community Development, that we've been able to implement a lot of the programs that were proposed. And I think that we will be on track to meet our deadlines, obviously, for RFPs every year for the next three years, including the link one that we've just, that we're still working on, and then. Just having the opportunity to. Encourage and support housing development throughout the city, both on city-owned sites and by private developers on other locations, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate all the hard work this year, and I know it has not been an easy year. I don't know if my permit for my ADU falls in this year or last year, frankly, but I may be one of those in the mix, and I know it was, was a lot of work, and it's a difficult time to be doing any construction project, and I was really grateful for for all the staff support to make it happen.
Yes, yours is in there.
Councilmember Castellano.
A couple of, thank you for the report, and a couple of questions. I was just curious, you know, I know that. Couple months ago that we, you know, we have the waterfront analysis on the agenda, and I'm curious, you know, and that's specifically looking at housing, if if that's, you know, I guess I just noticed we haven't, don't have too much movement yet on some of those above moderate level homes, housing. I'm imagining that that may be a resource potentially for developing some of that above moderate level housing.
Yes, Councilmember Castellano, the city did receive both SB two funding and LEAP funding that will be used to support creation of a specific plan for waterfront development with a focus on creating housing. And our staff is actually working right now to define the parameters of where that specific plan will be, and the next step after we do that will be to draft an RFP and get that out and get a consultant hired on, so that we can start the process of creating that document.
Great. And then, in terms of the the document you sent out earlier, I was wondering if in IMP H dash just seen the motel conversions to affordable housing, if it would make sense to, to, you know, though it was a specific program due to COVID, but it would make sense to speak to the motel conversions related to home key or room key within that, just to reference that we have, you know, participated in those programs?
We can certainly add that to. To the status on that one, absolutely.
And then. Maybe that's, I think that's all for now.
All right, do we have any other questions from council members? Seeing, oh, Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, it's a great report, Principal Planner Getz. I have a question about kind of long term. I mean, Eureka is a pretty finite area, at least city limits is. You know, twenty twenty-seven rolls around, let's say we've achieved all of our goals. What does the next ten years look like? Are we expected to, you know, build up, not out? I mean, just kind of crystal ball it, but, you know, how does this all work when we are limited in area and eventually we're going to be built out? You know, what's, what happens?
That's definitely an excellent question. During the fifth cycle of RENA, we had, I believe it was six hundred and two dwelling units that we needed to be able to provide. Available area. For developers to actually do those developments. This housing element, the sixth cycle element is a little bit different in that the state now actually requires, requires us to provide some housing, and that's where the idea came from for the the housing on the publicly owned lots. We are, through the zoning code update and the general plan update that we've completed in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, now able to build taller than we have been in the past. And I think because. As you mentioned, you know, the boundaries of Eureka are relatively set, there's not a lot of places that we can expand or annex. We did look at that certainly in the general plan update in two thousand eighteen. It was not cost effective at that point in time anyway to look at annexing, annexing outside of the city limits. It's a little difficult to go either north or west here, although not impossible. But yeah, so we're, we're basically, basically built out, and so having to look for creative ways to be able to create housing. So I think our small lot subdivisions, our conservation easements that we have now in the zoning code will allow some of those things to happen. Certainly, the development standards that the state of California and the City of Eureka have adopted, as far as accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, I think, also increase the opportunities for property owners to do development on their sites. So. It will be challenging. I fully expect that for cycle seven, our RENA numbers will be even higher than they are now, and we will have to figure out how we're going to deal with that at that point in time.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions before I send it to public comment? All right, Assistant City Manager Pell, do we have anybody who wants to make public comment on this item?
Um, Ms. Egger had indicated she may want to make comment tonight, so she is on the meeting.
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay. So any other, it looks like our group has gotten much smaller, so.
I don't see any.
I will bring it back and bring it to Councilmember Royo.
I was jumping the gun a little bit there. Yeah, I just, I wanted to note that this is a public opportunity to comment on our housing element. And I, I find myself wishing that Mr. Reagan was still here to talk about. His concerns, this is, you know, specifically the projects that were brought up in open comment around. The conversion of publicly owned properties to to housing is something that's actually related to implementation, measure H thirty-four, affordable housing on publicly owned properties, and that spells out some of the first steps we've taken towards that. So I know that council is aware of that, but it's just more for the public. I just wanted to comment that we, we have gone through a public process, our entire housing element process, and, and the, the item has been on the agenda in public meetings multiple times, although admittedly during a pandemic, we've had less opportunity for in-person public engagement around that issue, but it's, it's something very, obviously really important to the City of Eureka. Our housing element is very robust and has gone through a very thorough public process to be adopted, and it's something that I personally am very proud of, having been on the council as we were working. working towards these awesome goals. So I just wanted to thank staff for the hard work on this for really keeping on with the implementation of this despite some big unavoidable challenges this last year. And note that, that, you know, those properties were very much in the public dialogue this entire time.
Thank you, Councilmember Arroyo. I would also like to add to, for people who are looking at those numbers and they look so huge compared to what we've gotten done so far, RENA numbers are across the board, very high for all communities. And I think that city of Eureka has been incredibly aggressive in trying to get those numbers met. And nothing happens quickly, but I really do commend this staff for being creative and working hard to make sure that we can do that right now. Last time I checked, we had 130 houses on the market in all of Humboldt County. And there is a housing shortage of all kinds. And so this is super important work, and we're really glad that you're working on it. Any, oh, Councilmember Arroyo?
I'm sorry, I forgot one other comment. I just recently spoke with Senator McGuire on Saturday. He has a new baby at home and chose to speak to me on a Saturday morning. That's how dedicated he is. And he wanted me to really, I'm sure staff are aware that home key grants are now available to cities and not just counties, but he just really wanted me to get that out there and and be thinking creatively about anything we can do to utilize that funding. There's a lot more of that funding coming, and he thought it was really important that cities be eligible and not just counties, and I agree. So I was pleased to hear that. We were very much in his thoughts when it comes to housing creation, and I just wanted to convey that he spent a fair amount of time talking to me about that specific issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano. Oh, you muted yourself.
Yeah, okay, there we go. And sorry for the spooky lighting right now. But thank you to staff for all of your work on this. You know, and it's great that we do review it every year because it's a reminder of just how ambitious we need to be, and I appreciate all of the different aspects of the housing element. I also just want to let the public know that the Housing Element update was also on the the Board of Supervisors agenda for the county. And so you should be able to access that if you want to see how the county is doing as well. You know, because we are kind of all in it together. And, yeah, and just that there are, there is a real interest, you know, I think in the city of Eureka, what has been expressed on council to support housing of all types. And so, you know, I just want to encourage people to to, you know, if you, if you're thinking about building houses or if you own property that could become housing, to, you know, now I think is a great time to really pursue some of those visions because we are very interested in making sure that people have homes.
All right. Any other comments or a recommendation to receive the report? Councilmember Arroyo.
I recommend that we receive the report. Do we have to file it? Is there another action?
It just says to receive the Housing Element Progress Reports. So I believe we, do we vote on that? We vote on that, right?
We don't need a motion for that.
Oh, good.
I take it back.
All right. Well, it is about eight o'clock, and I think we've been in meetings since five, so I'll give everybody a break. When we return, Councilmember Burgeal or Mayor Protem Burgeal will run the next portion of the meeting. I need to recuse myself from item D2. And so I will be sent off to another room until you guys are done discussing that. So return please in 10 minutes. And at that time, Councilmember Burgeal will take over for that item.
Get my agenda up here. All right, well, welcome back, everybody. We'll now move to item B two, Premium Pay for Grocery Workers Emergency Ordinance Report. City Manager Slattery, is this you or?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. At the last council meeting, staff was directed to bring back a report about the parameters of a premium pay emergency ordinance that would provide premium pay for grocery workers. So staff was forwarded a draft ordinance that I plan on just going over the basic parameters of. It should be really short and quick. And then City Attorney Brown is going to, Brown, Black. Sorry, City Attorney Black. City Attorney Black is going to answer some of the questions that were brought up from a legal standpoint about the ordinance. So the draft ordinance, like I said, was provided to me by one of our council members. But the basic parameters is obviously that it only applies to grocery workers within the city of Eureka Limits. Hiring entities who employ 500 or more grocery store workers nationally and employ more than 15 employees per grocery store in the city of Eureka Limits or businesses that employ over 25 but have less than 500 grocery store workers nationally. This, that's who this, the companies that this would apply to. They have a calculation to determine, you know, at what the timeframe was that those employees to be considered. The, as far as the pay and the premium pay for those chains that have over 500 grocery store workers nationally, the hourly premium will be $4 per hour each, for each hour work, for each employee. And they also still have to have the 15 employees locally, of course. And then for those companies that have five, less than 500, but more than 25 at a grocery store here locally, the hourly premium will be $3 per hour for each employee. As far as the effectiveness of this ordinance, the way it is in draft form now, it'll go for a minimum of 90 days. And after that 90 days, it'd be up to the council's discretion as to whether or not to extend it. There is no mention in the ordinance of tiers. And there is also no mention in the ordinance of vaccination status or anything like that. So staff is just basing this off what was provided to them as a draft ordinance. And so with that, I will send it over to City Attorney Black to discuss some of the legal issues that were brought up at the last meeting.
Well, let me just give an overview. Multiple communities have adopted these premium pay requirements or something very, very similar. In virtually every community that has adopted them, there, there has been litigation filed by the Grocery Store Association, Grocery Stores Association. Not many decisions have been rendered. There is one in particular out of Long Beach in which a federal district court took up essentially three main arguments, legal arguments made against the ordinance. The first one, the, the Long Beach ordinance, the first one is the argument that regulation in this area is preempted by federal law, mainly the National Labor Relations Act. The court rejected that citing the history of the act and various other court cases in which local action has been deemed not to be preempted by federal, federal law. A second argument is equal protection. Because I, the, the argument being that this causes grocery store workers to be placed not just in the category of essential workers, but to receive a premium pay, whereas other essential workers are not governed by the ordinance. Their pay is not covered by the ordinance. And there is a lack of equal protection. That argument was shot down by the court. And that, those arguments have been presented in various courts where decisions have yet to be made. And in that particular case, though, an encouraging sign for advocates of the ordinance, not only was the preliminary injunction denied by the district court, but the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals declined to grant hearing to an appeal from that decision. So it's my opinion that it is likely that these ordinances are going to be upheld, but far from certain because the litigation is far from over. If we do adopt the ordinance here, there's no guarantee that we will or won't be sued. I think it's up, will be up to the, to the Grocery Store Association to decide whether it's worthwhile taking this ordinance on in the context of Eureka and Humboldt County.
I, I think that City Attorney Black's way of saying that with that, if you have any questions, staff's available to answer them. And we're ready.
Thank you. Councilmember Arroyo.
Has staff analyzed to, to which establishments this would apply?
We haven't, I've heard from establishments that it will apply to. We don't know all of them, but I would say that the majority of our grocery stores, it would apply, that basically categorize as grocery stores. I know that Eureka Natural Foods would qualify. Cash and Carry would qualify. Winco would qualify. Grocery Outlet would qualify. Trying to think of others that are in city of Eureka Limits, but the majority of our grocery stores and city limits would, would apply for this. Co-op, Co-op would apply.
Okay, and, and stores that have groceries, but also other goods, it would also apply to, to them.
Correct, so I believe the Walgreens would, would apply.
Like Walmart, Target.
Walmart, Target, yes.
And then would it apply to all their employees or just the grocery workers in those specific establishments?
It does make a reference, and it's not very clear, and the city attorney hasn't reviewed this. It does make a reference to drugstore workers as well in one of the headers, but it doesn't go on to really say that. We could bring back more information, but I'm assuming that it is meant for all the employees of the establishment. Cause I mean, some could make the argument that you're a grocery worker, but yet you have no contact with the public because you're a stalker, and I'm pretty sure that those people would qualify.
So the ordinance does, as part of its definition of grocery store, indicates that a grocery store is a retail store of any kind within the geographic limits of the city that devotes 15% or more of its interior space to the sale of household foodstuffs.
And so that's by square footage?
It's 15% of interior space, so yes, it doesn't quite say that, but I think that's what it means.
But it doesn't specify whether it's only the employees that, that do any food-related stocking, selling, et cetera tasks. I mean, I guess it's sort of, I was gonna say it's sort of an academic question, but actually it's not. Because I mean, when you think about stores that have a, a large number of employees, say exclusively in electronics, something like that, I, I think that's where it gets a little murky for me, so.
Yeah, so this, so the ordinance says grocery worker means a worker employed directly by a hiring entity at a grocery store. Grocery worker does not include managers, supervisors, or confidential employees. So I get the impression that if you devote more than 15% of your interior space, then all of your employees, other than managers, confidential, et cetera, are going to be covered by the ordinance, even if you don't work in the grocery department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Couple of questions for, for Bob. If, I guess I'd like to know what our exposure is as a city if we were sued. And then the second question would be, could another entity defend us in a lawsuit? I think that was a, you know, something that was brought up. I, I heard about is whether, you know, another group could defend the city and, and kind of lower our exposure.
So I think our exposure would be primarily the cost of litigation, i.e. the cost of defending ourselves. There are some theories. If they were to come under the private attorney general concept, that someone was defending a constitutional right, for example, and they prevailed against the ordinance, then there could be an award of the other side's attorney's fees against the city. But that, I don't want to say it's a narrow opportunity for them to collect attorney's fees because frankly, the theories raised, not so much the preemption, but the, you know, the other, the equal protection and the impairment of contract theories, those are constitutional, constitutionally based. And if we were deemed to have violated those, we could be responsible for attorney's fees. To the second question, we, I don't know of any prohibition against receiving the material support of another party to help defend this ordinance. The other party may choose to intervene in the lawsuit, or they may just choose to be a friend of the court in support of the city. But that could be very helpful to us if we're fighting for this. I don't know about, I'd have to, I'd have to think more deeply about, could they just pay the city's costs to fight for the ordinance? That raises a different set of ethical questions. I'm not saying no, it's a possibility.
Thank you.
Any further questions at this time? Councilmember Moulton?
I just wanted to, a question about the layout of how the timeline could possibly work for this. So right now, we're, this isn't an ordinance, it isn't introduced, we're just getting information. So if we were to give direction to staff to come back with an ordinance at the next, you know, as soon as possible? And then if it got full support all the way through, what is the earliest that it would be implemented?
So if, I mean, it's somewhat up to council, if they wanted to hold a special meeting. Oh, I don't think we can do that with an emergency resolution. So I think it would have to be at the next meeting, which would be the 20th, and it would go down as an emergency resolution. It would take a supermajority for this vote in order to pass it. And if it was passed, it would be implemented the following day. Now, if we did it like a regular ordinance, it would go on the 20th. It would get its first reading, then it would go to the first meeting in May and get its second reading. And then at that point, 60 days from that point is when it would go into effect. And that would take a simple majority, three votes.
Since this seems like an emergency thing, let's work with that one. And then it goes into effect for automatically 90 days or this draft, this idea, this version of it. Would go into effect automatically for 90 days regardless of tier? Or you're just saying, I'm sorry, this version doesn't have any tier, doesn't mention a tier?
Or vaccinations or anything.
So when do we get out of it?
It's up to council, so it could, the earliest it could stop is after 90 days. But between those 90 days, it could be extended by council.
And what if we are in yellow tier by the time it gets implemented?
This makes no mention of that.
These are all details we would have to work out if we wanted to go forward. Yes? Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, well, with that, then we will open it up for public comment. You can help me out? I don't see any right now. We did have some folks who signed up. I'm not seeing them right now, but if you could raise your hand, oh, Benjamin Hess.
Evening. I just wanted to talk in support of the hazard pay ordinance. I'm a grocery store worker. Have been for the last 10 plus years and half of that time here in Eureka. So I have a lot of concerns about the pandemic and what my fellow coworkers are having to deal with in this moment. I have a lot of coworkers that have family at home that need to be taken care of. It's children and elderly folks that get to take time off for, and they're losing work for. So I, I, I really think it's a great way to, to kind of release that, take off that burden off of a lot of our individuals in that way. I just wanted to talk about the, this, this, if there's any success, I think in our community with fighting the pandemic, fighting COVID-19, a lot of it can be attributed to the retail workers, to particularly grocery stores, which have been open the entire time, informing the public, setting examples, and conforming of the regulations or recommendations by the government and by the businesses themselves. And I think that we do it not just to support our business, but also the health of our fellow customers and our fellow employees and our families at home. So I, I really, I really think a lot of this, and like I said, any success we've had with the, with enforcing it and bringing COVID to an end can be attributed to us. And I really wanted to also talk about, there's also this, I know we've all had difficulties in the last year plus. I not, wouldn't suggest otherwise, but I think grocery store workers are, have had a unique amount of stress placed on them from being this kind of enforcer of rules, which has been vague at times for a long time. We've had to deal with the public, which has been rather belligerent in its understanding and taking on its responsibilities. I've had people fighting with opposing customers in my grocery store. I've had protests, mask removals. And it, it just seems bad. But the least we can do right now is to help out those who are.
Benjamin, your three minutes are up. Thank you so much for being here. Mayor Protem Vergel, Kevin has his hand raised. Thank you. Kevin, go ahead.
First, I'd like to start by thanking all of you for putting this on, this discussion on the agenda tonight. My name is Kevin Lennox, and I'm a union rep for United Food and Commercial Workers Local Five. Locally, I represent Co-op, Safeway, and Rite Aid employees. Over the past 13 months, I've seen how much this pandemic has affected my members. While enduring the constant stress of possible COVID-19 exposure for themselves and those around them, they've also managed the added stress of tourists, massenires, school closures, homeschooling, and a shameful level of federal incompetence. Yet they keep showing up every day, continuing to put product on the shelves for us. This despite the fact that grocery workers have received little in the form of compensation and appreciation for it, with most of their employers paying hero or hazard pay for a couple of months at best while making record profits. You may have noticed that I just referred to hazard pay as hero pay. Initially, that's what we called it because early on, we recognized and appreciated the fact that grocery workers are keeping us fed, and without them, we'd be in even a worse situation. I'm not sure what happened to change the way we think about grocery workers, but any expectation that grocery workers should show up and be happy that they have a job or that their year-long sacrifices shouldn't be acknowledged is just wrong-headed and needs to change. That change, for Humboldt County at least, hopefully starts tonight with this ordinance. It's time to give these heroes the hazard pay they deserve. I urge the council to support our heroes by passing a grocery workers hazard pay ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Kevin? Anyone else? All right. Let's see, I believe, Michael, did you wish to speak? Michael, you're on. All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Sorry about that. I had a little communication problem. Okay, well, thank you for your time in the interest of three minutes. You know, we are an independently operated grocery outlet bargain market located on 625 Commercial. You know, our store has proudly served our community for over 40 years. We are writing in regards to the proposal of the Eureka Hazard Pay Ordinance. You know, during the health pandemic, you know, we've done all we can to provide great service, a safe store, and a good place for people to come and shop and save money. But were our stores subject to this ordinance? However, the mandate that we pay an additional $3 an hour hazard pay to our employees would threaten our financial viability. You know, were we forced to close, you know, the low-income families who depend on us would lose an affordable option for their groceries if this pandemic pay would be continually a, a, a system? You know, the Eureka Grocery Outlet is a locally independent-owned discount grocery store. While we operate under a license from Grocery Outlets Incorporated permitting us to use the Grocery Outlet brands, we are completely separate business entity. You know, Grocery Outlet Incorp has no financial or other ownership interest in us. No other business or person besides the independent operators, Catherine and myself, own our business. We in turn have absolutely no other ownership or financial interest in any other business. Catherine and I operate the store with the help of our 28 employees. Our staff and our employees, no one, are, are no one else's. No one else hires, no one else trains or directs them. We manage and cover payroll out of our own business revenues. Our employees are not employees of Grocery Outlet. Grocery Outlet does not fund any of our operating expenses. Grocery Outlet does not fund any of our operating expenses or payroll costs. If this ordinance were to apply to us, the three-dollar hazard pay would increase our labor costs by approximately fourteen thousand dollars per month. When you consider the wage increase, additional payroll taxes, and workers' compensation, and increase in overtime and vacation as sick pay, we cannot afford to remain in business. Um, I just wanted to put this out there and let you know that we are doing all that we can. But for a smaller business like us, this is really gonna hurt us financially. And we don't know to what extreme if it continues after the ninety days. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Michael. And I see John Fromm, you have your hand up?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
All right. Uh, thank you, Kim. Good evening. My name is John Fromm. I'm with United Food and Commercial Workers Local Five. We are the ones who proposed this ordinance here, and I want to remind the council that a number of things that you can do, there's variables, including the size of the employer and the duration and how far back that you go. Um, I do want to state that I am extremely proud to live in a city where our council has the chance to honor hard-working grocery employees with more than just words. And I tell you, they will absolutely appreciate it if you pass this ordinance. As you may be aware, according to an occupational environmental medicine report, grocery workers have a one-in-five chance of contracting COVID-19, out of which three are four asymptomatic. While less than the general public have a one-in-one-hundred chance. Over nine hundred UFCW members in Northern California have contracted COVID-19, and five have died. That is five too many. Grocery workers have continued to provide essential services to the citizens of Eureka in the face of enormous risk during the most tumultuous time in recent history, and with the added stresses associated with schools being closed for so long. Every day, they're in direct contact with the public they serve, and like so many, they can't work from home. With bars and restaurants restricted or closed, grocery stores have reaped unprecedented profits during this pandemic. Yet for ten months, they have failed to share those profits with those who have taken the greatest risk to generate them. All workers are essential, but unlike other industries, grocery employers have had the increased profit. I'm also proud that our community is different than many large cities in that we emphasize support of local businesses. This extends to our support of local mid-side grocers because we believe investing in, in local businesses keeps the dollars here in our community. By making this small temporary investment in our local grocery workers, the city of Eureka will also be investing in our community. And as reopening expands, Eureka grocery workers will spend the money here, locally in our community, and often at these same stores. We all hope that we're on the road back to pre-pandemic circumstances. But unfortunately, with multiple variants and so many citizens still not wanting the vaccine, let alone wearing a mask, a fourth surge could be coming, the same as has in other parts of the country. We hope not, but we also have taken that entire risk the entire time and will continue to show up to work. Thank you very much for taking the opportunity to discuss this, and I really hope that you take the opportunity to enact a grocery worker hazard pay ordinance.
Thank you, John. Gregory, I see your hands up.
Thank you. I would like to thank the mayor and the city council members of Eureka for giving me an opportunity to speak here today. My name is Gregory Fillmore, and I'm the administrative officer here at Eureka Natural Foods. As we all know, several businesses were deemed essential in the response to the COVID-19 pandemic nearly a year ago and have remained open since. Hardware stores, drugstores, pharmacies, gas stations, auto stores and dealerships, delivery businesses, hotel and lodging facilities, and even city and county employees have had to remain working in the public, which begs the question, why is this ordinance solely focused on the grocery industry and why now? We here at Eureka Natural Foods locally have been proactive in dealing with this crisis for nearly the past twelve months now. The timings and motives of this ordinance is questionable at best. In March of 2020, we here at Eureka Natural Foods began paying hazard pay or hero pay for our staff members at a rate increase of two dollars per hour, which we have done for a year. Also, we've given staff members a hundred dollars on their employee card every month, which still remains, in addition to their already twenty-five percent store discount, which we've always had for staff members. Beyond hazard pay, we have implemented many other accommodations in the face of this pandemic, all of which have increased the cost of doing business. We've made scheduling accommodations for staff members with special concerns or needs, either personally or due to family issues. We've modified and increased cleaning schedules, including supplies and provided personal protective equipment for all of our staff members. We've made structural modifications within the store for air protection and staff members for customers. We've installed Plexi Class at the registers. We've created additional break areas, just to name a few. It has been an almost daily challenge meeting the demands of this ever-changing landscape that we have all been a part of for the last year. We, as an organization, are very proud that we have responded to this pandemic and feel that we have done everything in our power to continue to provide an essential service to our community while properly caring for our most valuable assets, our staff members. Vaccine rollout is continuing to progress throughout Humboldt County, California. Currently, every staff member at Eureka Natural Foods that is interested in receiving the vaccine has been vaccinated, which is nearly a hundred percent of our staff, and no staff members contracted COVID-19 while at work. I would like to take, take this time and thank the mayor and the city council for acknowledging that essential workers have provided invaluable service to our community during this global pandemic. However, the timing of this ordinance and the presumption that local grocers have failed to adequately compensate and protect their staff members during this pandemic is appalling. Again, I would like to thank you for taking your time and letting me speak here tonight and for your thoughtful consideration of this matter. Thanks.
Thank you, Gregory. Um, is anybody else out there that would like to comment? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council for comments. Councilmember Orio?
I can see no one wants to really go first. That's a tough one. There's a lot to digest here. Well, I, as someone who favored talking about this, as, as most of us did, I think, you know, there are some great points raised in public comment and in the communications that I've received from dozens of grocery store workers who feel that, unfortunately, their take on it is not that they have necessarily been taken care of. And I realize the experiences vary based on people's own circumstances and employer, and I, I don't doubt that those who are responsive enough to be here tonight are doing the very best they can. I also really wanted to hear, and you know, the concerns from community members who are on the front lines, and as someone who is an essential worker who has been working full-time with other people and exposed to COVID the entire pandemic as well, and working with first responders, I, I can say, you know, I understand that there are concerns around fairness, and I also feel that supporting some of the community who are essential workers still has a benefit. So it doesn't mean that just because I haven't gotten a bonus, I don't want other people to receive additional compensation. So I, I'm a little stuck on a couple of things. For one, the, the timeline of implementation is, it, it is not going, i-if we were to move forward with this, it wouldn't happen very quickly. And I do wish that it had come forward months ago. I mean, there's nothing we can do about it now. It's sort of water under the bridge that this didn't happen like five, six months ago, and I understand there were some reasons for that, but it feels a little, a little late for us to be acting on an emergency ordinance at this time when the vaccine rollout is the way that it is and our county's conditions are, are changing in the way that they are. That said, I also understand that we could be seeing another wave, so I'm a little hesitant on that point, but not, it's not enough to dissuade me from continuing the conversation. Additionally, I unders, I know that we would get significant, it, it would really hurt some relationships in the community, including amongst people who have contacted me at least to say, you know, I'm a hardware store worker, or I'm in another essential, you know, an essential service, and why, why not me? And so I think, you know, if we were to continue considering this, I would, I would want to talk about inclusivity. And, and that's it, like, where does that kind of, where does that end? You know, I, I think there are, there are a lot of workers who have been exposed significantly as well. And then I have concerns about the liability issues. Of course, they never really want to put us in a position of almost being sure that we'll be sued. And so that's, we, we rarely go forward thinking like, we're gonna get sued and we're gonna do it anyway. Because they don't, you know, I think part of our job is to protect the public assets, and that includes considering that. And then lastly, you know, actually, I'll, I'll stop there for now and think a little bit more about what I want to say and give space to others.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano, did I see your hand?
Yeah, um, let's see, this is one that I've done, I've been doing a fair amount of research on, and you know, just really trying to understand, you know, kind of the larger movement around this across the state and specifically in Washington. You know, from what I've seen, and, and again, I, this is just something I'm wrestling with, that, you know, every other hazard pay or hero pay ordinance or provision that I've seen has a clearly delineates businesses with over three hundred and fifty employees. You know, this is the only one I've seen that has a provision for businesses with twenty-five or over employees. And, and again, not, I'm not saying that means I'm opposed to it, but, you know, I do also, you know, in terms of implementation, want to make sure that, you know, I, I know that, you know, businesses have had access to PPP loans and things like that, which, which have provided some economic stabilization during the last year. But in terms of, you know, I, I guess, like, in terms of, like, direction to staff or something, I almost feel like it would be good to have two separate, I guess, ordinances is what we're looking at, so that we could kind of address them both separately. To me, you're looking at, a lot, a lot of this came out of a Brookings Institute study, right, that highlighted the amount of profits that large corporate businesses were making over the past year, you know, specifically some of the biggest, biggest big-box kind of grocers. And, you know, through that Brookings study, then this, this idea kind of was disseminating amongst the communities. That being said, you know, I, I do think that when we're looking at something tailored to Eureka, you know, like, do we want to include other kinds of hazard workers? You know, is, is three dollars too much? You know, do we want to have some sort of provision for, like, if people have been vaccinated? You know, like, is there a rate of hazard pay related to vaccination? I, I'm asking more questions than making statements at this point. I think it's just, you know, I'm, I'm really wrestling with this of, you know, both wanting to see our small businesses continue to, to do well, you know, is, you know, from, I, I know, like, April through July, April through July, August, you know, our local grocers were seeing those same kinds of increases in profits. But, you know, since August, it hasn't, you know, that kind of profit increase hasn't been maintained. Yeah, these, these are just what, what I'm wrestling with right now.
Councilmember Bauer?
No, I, I appreciate where Councilmember Castellano was going, trying to think about, you know, how this would play out, you know, how, how would we direct staff to, to, to deal with this? And a lot of great points, you know, I look at this as kind of from a contract perspective, you know, that in the future, I think, I don't think we're gonna go another hundred years between pandemics like, like this. I think humanity is, you know, occupying every space on earth, and that typically leads to this kind of things happening. So I look at, what's the future hold, you know, do we put provisions into contracts? Or do, you know, unions negotiate contracts that include hazard pay for these kind of situations? I think that's important to think about down the road, and I think there are so many great points about, what about, you know, not, you know, what about emergency room technicians? What about sewer plant workers who have had to, you know, are dealing with a pretty dangerous substance and have had to work through this? You know, that all resonates with me. That should be more encompassing, but, you know, growing up in a UFCW household, you know, and, and living through strikes and, you know, I, I get it, you know, they've been on the front line. So I think crafting, if this were, if we're gonna direct, you know, staff, you know, we need to think about things like, when does it end? You know, when, I mean, we're gonna enter the orange tier soon, you know, are we on our way to yellow? Are we, are we getting out of this thing? Are we getting close to herd immunity? There's all these questions that we all probably have. And, you know, what, what's, where do we put this, you know, what kind of timeframe? So I, like, I think all of you, I have more questions than answers, and, but I do, I do get it. I get the, the need, the, the need, perceived need. But I think it's something that we got a lot of thinking to do, and, and here we are. I just think, like, Councilmember Orio said, you know, it, here we are, we're way down, we're a year out of this thing. You know, it's something that should have been considered sooner, understood that it, there was reasons behind that, but I don't know, maybe I'll have more thoughts later, but that's, I'm just trying to think of what's the next steps? Because we could talk about this all night, you know, so, thanks.
Councilmember Orio?
Thank you. It's, it's nice to hear your thinking on this. It is complicated. It's, we almost never tell businesses how to compensate their employees. I can't think of a time that we've done it. So this is uncharted for us to be asked to, to consider this and, and daunting to look at what's happened to other cities. So, that said, you know, I, I see this as, it's, it's something that would be so much better for the county or the state or the federal government to make rules about, because being put in this position of being a small city who desperately tried to support our small local businesses that are locally owned and the employees that work there, and we, we try so hard and do so much to, to show that we are both business-friendly and worker-friendly. And then, you know, this is an issue where there's a divide. So I, I, I wish that this were resolved at a level that would be above us and more equitable in our community as a whole. Much like I wish when we were asked to support a fifteen-dollar minimum wage many years ago in Eureka, I wish that that had been implemented at a higher level. That said, I advocated for that then, and I still would lay it on the line to advocate for increases in pay for people who have had to go through hell and back and contract COVID. And even if some stores have not seen employees contracting COVID, I know full well from people telling me that they did contract COVID at different establishments that it has happened, and it has been a significant issue for people. So. So I would be interested in seeing more on this topic. I think I, I don't have, the challenge now is that I don't have clear direction for staff that's formulated. I would be concerned about some of the ideas that councilmember Castellano brought up. You know, making this perhaps more equitable with things that have happened in other communities. And, you know, making it more similar to ordinances that have passed in, in other cities that have come before us already, you know, three, four months ago in this issue. But I do have some trepidation around like, who it applies to and when it ends and, and, you know, and how can we make it clear and succinct enough that, you know, there's a clear end date in sight and it isn't an overwhelming hardship for our smaller businesses. So those are, those are kind of my founding thoughts, and I wanted to hear if other councilmembers want to see something like that forward, or whether it's just not something you want to see at this time.
Councilmember Castellano?
Let's see, one thought I had in terms of ending was, I'm like, maybe if I work backwards, you know? You know, the, like, Governor made an announcement today about, you know, like, going into reopening on June 15th. So I feel like that would be, you know, the end date unless, unless things change, you know, like, we could have some sort of, you know, qualifier for, you know, if there's another wave, it could continue, but otherwise ending on June 15th with the reopening. You know, and this is where, like, I'm not an expert in making this up as I go along, but, you know, like, something about, and again, right, I, I appreciate councilmember, councilmember Bowers' thoughts around, you know, like, how does this affect contracts and, you know, and like, maybe there's some work that we're doing in terms of like, setting precedents for, for future ways that people look at these kinds of things, you know? And so maybe that's useful. And maybe it's kind of strange territory for us too, you know, at the same time. You know, and that's why I'm like, well, would there be a smaller amount if people have had access to the vaccine? And a larger amount if they haven't had access to the vaccine? That's, that's one of the things that I would consider. And then whether or not it went, it was retroactive in any way, you know? And then also whether or not to include, I don't know, I guess I would be, you know, I'm wondering about other industries. Also. Well, and, okay, so one thing, and this is maybe on the more corporate scale, is, you know, like, looking at that Brookings study and kind of following some trails from there, right? There, you know, there's links to the top 20 companies that have grossed the most in the last year, you know, nationally. And, and that's where I feel like, you know, to me, that's an area where, yes, those people who work for those companies in Eureka, you know, who haven't been compensated for, for that work, you know, I would definitely like to see them be compensated for that work.
Councilmember Moulton, did you want to say anything?
Thank you for asking. I've been trying to think of what to say. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around how to implement this fairly. When, when you talk about very large profits, I think about very large companies. And when I talk to grocery store workers about, you know, just, excuse me, anecdotally, just my friends, you know, about, has the store been making a lot more money? And I hear about, you know, improvements behind the scenes and equipments being replaced and, and other ways that the, the stores are improving their business and their employees' lives with whatever extra profits are coming in. And I'm just picturing this like, supporting grocery workers, but only, and not other workers who are in similarly risky situations or supporting front of house people, but not back of house people, or supporting people who do the exact same job, but at different stores that happen to be different sizes. I'm having a really hard time coming up with a way that I feel good about this being like, truly egalitarian, actually addressing the issue, which is that folks are at extra risk, putting extra, and, and making extra profits for their business. But I just don't, I'm having a hard time with this one. I do have a procedural question, which is, when the mayor is recused and councilmember Rigel is acting as mayor pro tem, do you remain part of our deliberative body and you retain a vote? Okay, so do you have anything to say?
I do. I wanted to give everybody else an opportunity first, as I often do when I'm mayor pro tem. I too have really been struggling with this. I've talked to a lot of people. The things that I struggle with is not that people don't deserve the extra money, but frankly, it has to do a lot with relevance. We are one year in, we are going to the orange tier potentially, you know, moving forward to yellow. The vaccines are plenty. There are people who are refusing to be vaccinated, and that's a choice. But, I mean, you know, I too am an essential worker. I've been working at school the whole time. I had, you know, one month where I worked at home, but I've been at school the whole time. So, you know, there's, there, there are a lot of different professions that are experiencing the risk of being out there. I too, you know, I struggle with this whole business of the inclusiveness of it, you know? So you work at Target and they have more employees, you get $3 more, or you get $5 or $4 an hour. But you work at Pats Market, which had, or not Pats, that's too small. But if you work at the co-op, and so we're going to give you $3, because, you know, the co-op doesn't make as much as Target. That kind of thing troubles me. I'm really struggling with that. And to hear from different businesses, I, you know, I talked to some Safeway workers and then hearing tonight about Eureka Natural Foods, that there were businesses that, that did support, I mean, they supported their workers in ways that, that we're talking about, you know, this hero's pay. I know that Safeway got that for a year. I talked to one of their employees and they said to me, well, you know, now, you know, the vaccines are coming in. It feels, you know, I feel a lot more safe. It's not really an issue. And that's one person. That's not, I'm not using that as an example for the entire grocery worker group. But there are people with that mentality as well. The other piece of it, and I'm so grateful you brought that up, councilmember Arroyo, about the, the minimum wage thing that we both worked on when we were new. And had that come through a bigger entity, it may have had more traction and may have passed. And I feel like as a city, this may, this may not be the format for bringing this type of thing forward. You know, had it, had it come forward five months ago, I might have been a lot more interested in, in making it work. But, you know, now, you know, councilmember Castellano is talking about June 15th. Yeah, I just, I don't have any, any clear direction. I think that honestly, if we did go back to a higher tier again, if we did have another wave, I would absolutely be willing to consider this type of thing. But with the current state of the city, if you will, I just, I don't feel, I just don't feel clear on what direction I would take. And just the opportunity that there may be a chance of litigation, even if, even if, you know, we won, or they won, any type of legal fee that we set ourselves up for seems irresponsible. So there's a lot that I too have going on, and I don't really have a clear vision moving forward at this time. And I mentioned that when I brought this forward in council reports. So I'm not sure where to go from here. City manager Slattery? Give some direction?
Well, it's been very clear, but I think that there needs to be some sort of direction as to whether or not this needs to be brought back for more information or with different drafts, as councilmember Castellano came, or as councilman, mayor pro tem Rigel said, maybe wait until some sort of tier change happens and then come back with something. I'm not feeling very directed and, and having a clear direction.
Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts on that? I mean, personally, I would be willing to, to table this until such a time as it becomes relevant again. As far as, again, with vaccines being so available right now and being in lowering tiers and things opening up right now the way that they are, I don't know that, you know, I could, and, and the equity of it, I don't know that I would, I could support it at this time. Any other comments? Councilmember Moulton?
I know we can't do straw polls or anything, but if we were to try and, if we were to do this in a timeline that made it useful at all, assuming we're heading in this direction, that would mean that it would be an emergency thing and that four of us would have to vote for it, not three, just pointing that out.
Correct. Whether we do this, you know, more immediately at the next council meeting, and it needs to be implemented right away, it would take forfeits. If we chose to go councilmember Rigel's, I would assume that if we were to go back to the purple tier and some change of, you know, status that we have, that would most likely, we'd want to do that as soon as possible. So that would take forfeit vote too. It would only be three, three votes if, you know, council felt it okay for it to take at least, you know, 90 days or so through the regular ordinance process. Well, maybe not 90, depending, 70 something days it would take for the regular process. And that would be the simple majority.
And this type of ordinance really isn't something that we would codify in code because it's temporary in nature. So I think an urgency ordinance is the usual route that we would take for something like this. Because a codified code would be there permanently.
So what I'm hearing from you, Pam, is that with urgency ordinance, we would need a forfeit.
To do something on this, city attorney black, what do you say? Codified codes are just so much different. I guess we could put a timeframe, but we would need to know that if we were to codify it in our DMC.
Well, you can write a clause into the ordinance declaring it to be an uncodified ordinance. And then you can still go through the introduction, adoption process. But as we view it from here, I think city manager is basically correct. I think you're looking at 60 days, roughly, maybe 70 for the normal ordinance process to work its way through. And so, you know, that puts it pretty far out. The vaccinations are going to be pretty widespread by then. So, yeah, I, I think urgency ordinance is the ideal way to do it, but obviously only if there are four votes. And I hear from Vice Mayor Rigel that four votes is the most, is, it's four votes at the most, because she's not going to be counted in that number.
So not to throw another option out there, but councilmember Bauer did make mention that, I mean, it could be something that's codified and put in there, and whenever pandemics come up, this is something that's applicable, correct? City Attorney Black, we could do something where it's codified and when we have situations like this, that it's automatic, that it's implemented?
You could. That would be, I think, a very interesting exercise in ordinance drafting. And I'm not saying it can't be done, and I'm not saying it's not a worthy project, but it is. And of course, that would be amenable to the regular adoption process. So, yeah, that, I mean, that could be done and but we would want to, I don't, I don't think it would take as much effort as the animal ordinance took, but it would be, there are so many variables, that's, that's the issue. For example,
We'll call it the camping ordinance.
There you go. Oh, low blow. But the, the, for example, just to give you an example, the, you know, $3, $4, $5 might not be meaningful 10 years from now. I mean, nobody knows. So you'd have to develop different measures, probably related to the cost of living adjustment, et cetera. But, yeah, it could be done.
So, oh, go ahead, councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I mean, I think it wouldn't be that hard in essence, you know, declared state of emergency, the federal level, what, the state level? You could do, pay could be related to like, time and a half, you know, beyond 30 hours or something. I mean, there's easy ways from a contract perspective, I think, to do it. But like you said, I mean, it maybe doesn't happen ever, but at least it would be in place. And it wouldn't have to be rushed into trying to, to, to do something. But I also would think maybe a solution for an urgency ordinance would be for staff to, to think about, or not think about, but look into, what if we go into the purple tier, you know? Have something ready that we could talk about, but I don't know how that, process wise, I don't know how that would work, right? You spend time, you develop something, maybe we raise the ceiling to be 500 employees or whatever, what we've been discussing. And we have it ready to go in case we start moving back up, you know, in, in the immediate future. Because if we just let it lie, it might be doing a disservice to this whole deliberative process, you know? I don't know if we can do that, but it's a thought, not that it comes back immediately, but it's something that we have ready to go in the future as an urgency ordinance. And then we maybe think about in the future to codify an actual ordinance that would address a future pandemic. And I'm not even thinking just a pandemic. What if something else happens, you know, that's a crisis? Not just something that's epidemiologic, you know, but something else that we have something in place that would provide for people that are, that are doing hazard pay, if that makes sense. That's just some thoughts on it.
So, yeah, so I would support something like that. I think that having something in place would be quite helpful in the long run. And I would like, if we were to do something like that, I certainly would want it to be inclusive of all or most essential workers. I mean, that includes, you know, gas station workers, the whole, everyone, if that's possible. Councilmember Arroyo, I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to back that idea. I was going to suggest something very similar, that we have some language ready to go should we see another spike. I think it's frankly, I'm just going to be really honest, it's a difficult thing to be asked to do, given our conditions. It's politically challenging and it will, you know, I, I hear trepidation from all of us. And, you know, I, by the same token, I think it makes sense if we see a dramatic change in the conditions. But given the vaccination rates and everything else at this juncture, it just, it's a really heavy lift. everything else at this juncture, it just, it's a really heavy lift. But I, I do like the idea of being ready for potential urgency ordinance should conditions change dramatically again. And I don't know whether that means the red or the purple, but you know, if we're seeing a trend upward that's sustained, then I, I would be perfectly willing to bring this back. And it would be great to sync it up with what other municipalities have done.
Could we do that by consensus? Or do we have to vote? Could we, could we say that if we go to the red tier that staff, you know, we have a consensus that staff would prepare something to prepare us for moving forward?
I think that you could have by a consensus just to direct staff to put something together and have it ready for you for consideration.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Clicked the wrong button, sorry. Just touching on the notion of a sort of permanent, you know, kicks in an emergence in, and kicks in, in an emergency style thing that a piece of this has to do with the fact that grocery stores are, a lot of them are making really high profits. So it's not just that people are in hazard, but that they're in hazard in the process of making the business a lot of extra money. So in a future emergency, that just might not be the case, even in a future pandemic. So I think we need to be careful about something like that. And if we did try to do something going forward, I would want to address the, the equality and make it something, if the city is going to mandate that, that businesses have to compensate workers for getting, you know, putting themselves at extra risk, then it would have to be everybody who is doing that. And then, so in the future, something I think would need to then add in the, the, anybody who's exposed to the risk, not just one category of people who is exposed to that risk, but it might not work because there might not be also this piece of that exposure resulting in extra profits that would then justify you know, rebalancing that.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
I, I do appreciate the sense of equity. Just in terms of, you know, wanting to consider many different jobs. I also think that at, at that point, it starts to just feel like a string that keeps unraveling, you know, and, and very hard to put any boundaries on because also, you know, I mean, that's one thing I appreciate about the grocery store, the grocery workers focus in this is that it sets a, you know, a clearly defined precedent, you know, that, that could be used in, in other ways. I just think, oh, you know, like, like maybe, you know, some pandemics, everyone goes to the hardware store. Other pandemics, someone, you know, no one does, you know, or, or whatever. And then we're, we're kind of creating these. You know, and then I think that starts to get into councilmember Arroyo's concerns around the, you know, the role of like, like our, our small role in government, you know, and how, like, like, how much can we do to, to really navigate these things? I, you know, I'm still. But, but I, you know, when it's Attorney Black was talking, I mean, I, I got excited, like, ooh, let's, let's try some, you know, I mean, I, I think, you know, investigating the practice of law is very interesting. You know, and, and why, why not break new ground? But I started to feel like we're kind of talking about three things, you know, so there's like policy for workers who are creating, working in pandemic, pandemics or disasters or, or, you know, those kinds of situations and, you know, what may be needed. And then, you know, policies for specifically right now, you know, and that's, and then we have, you know, two separate things before us, one for, you know, larger, more corporate entities and one for smaller entities. And for me, it makes the most sense to kind of break those down into three different things. But I don't know if there's consensus to pursue all three, just one. I do think it, it could be useful to have a smaller amount of, you know, hazard pay. That would also be, you know, like, for instance, a dollar more an hour if you've had access to the vaccine. You know, and through June fifteenth, I'm just, I'm kind of just throwing things out there. And then, you know, the, the three dollars per hour without access to the vaccine. Because I do think there's a significant difference in having access to the vaccine versus not in terms of the, the health hazard. And then, you know, and then also a, a greater amount for larger, more corporate entities such as those outlined. And than smaller businesses.
So, I mean, while we're clear now, all, all grocery workers have access to the vaccine. They've had access in the previous tier and currently have access through the new system that the county has put up. Now, if they choose not to get it, then that's up to them. But right now, anybody who is a grocery worker has access to the vaccine.
I, I realize that. But, but I think in terms of setting precedent, you know, like if another pandemic were to come along and there wasn't yet a vaccine, right? The, the, the working in that condition versus working once you've had an access to the vaccine are, to me, two different kind of risk factors.
And, you know, what we could do, because there's concerns about equity, it, it doesn't prevent us from coming up with something and for this case, make it for grocery workers. And then if it turns out that, you know, hamburger stands are making good money, we can change it for hamburger stand workers. I mean, it can, it can, we could change it like that if, if need be. I think that that would be easier to take into account who's making money during what time and who do you want to make it applicable to?
So just bringing this back, I think that there was some, a good point made. The item on the table is the grocery worker ordinance. And perhaps we can discuss later, putting together a pandemic ordinance by consensus at a, at a later meeting. That's not the issue at hand as far as I see, even though we've all been talking about it and it's very important. So do you feel like you have enough information and guidance on the grocery ordinance?
Yeah. I mean, as far as what I, my understanding right now is to have something drafted in case we should change tiers and we have it ready for back for council's consideration. What I'm hearing from council as it relates to this one, is that it needs to have some more clear definitions about when it starts and ends, and also, I mean, when it ends, but also clear definition. It seemed to me that there was a consensus that council was leaning more towards the larger conglomerate five hundred plus employees, similar to the other ordinances that were passed by other jurisdictions and not necessarily the twenty-five local. And those are the, kind of the changes that we would make and bring it back. Either at the purple tier or potentially the red tier. Depending on if we go to the red tier, we could bring it back the following council meeting. And what we could do is if, let's say, next week we went to the red tier, council could say, I want a special meeting. That special meeting would be to deliberate on the parameters of that ordinance. And then the following regularly scheduled meeting, we could come with an urgency ordinance for adoption. That's okay, correct? City manager Poe? Assistant city manager Poe, wow, I'm giving up my job already.
I, I believe that would work. And we, we would also, well, if we had another pandemic, we may be able to somehow incorporate it into our emergency proclamation in some way. But, yeah, I think that, that would be a good way to proceed for this particular pandemic. If going into a different tier.
Okay, so is there any further comments or concern or question or discussion or? Any of that? Councilmember Castellano?
I, I guess I would still be interested in produce, in doing something that's, you know, through this June fifteenth period. But with, you know, wage adjustment, wage increase adjustments made to factor in access to the vaccine. If, yeah, I'm, I'm still interested in that, but and I guess I'm wondering if other council members are or not.
You're talking about just for grocery store workers, right?
Yeah.
So they, I mean, they have all had access to the vaccine.
I know. That's, I guess, basically, sorry, I don't, I must not be saying clearly enough. That, so in, in this proposed ordinance, right, there's a three dollar and five dollar amount. So basically, in my mind, that amount was also about an increased amount of hazard, right? And so I would, what I'm saying is it would be not as much money wage increase once someone has access to the vaccine. Such as one and three, just to throw some numbers out.
So right now, it's three and four.
Okay. Well, I'll still say one and three.
I think what's confusing people is the reference to the vaccine. What you're saying is since they already have access to the vaccine, all of them do, that we do some sort of system where it's one dollar and three dollars. But that goes into saying that you're still proposing that the, you know, twenty-five employee threshold is still in there. And not the, just five hundred. Just trying to clarify.
Yeah, and I believe it was three fifty, not hundred, if I'm remembering correctly.
And the draft one that I have?
Okay.
It's five hundred.
Okay, some, some of the state ones are five, some are three fifty.
I'm sorry, I'm feeling a little bit spent on, like, there, there's too many thread, there's too many variables. They don't want to be unresponsive to your recommendation. I just, I think I would need to think about it more, given the conversation that has happened tonight and talk with some, like, do a little more research, honestly. So I don't know whether it would be something that we want to agendize again to consider or give staff feedback on. I, I just, I get the sense we're all very low energy and don't exactly know where to take this conversation, but it's not because we don't care about the issue at hand. So, any suggestions?
Councilmember Bauer?
I, I don't know if we're low energy. I think we're trying to solve a problem that is really a legislative fix at the state level. So we've been tasked or we're asked to be, to look at an issue that really requires state fix. You know, I mean, this is something that's universal across all jurisdictions, municipalities. And we're just being given a really tough task that has, yeah, you start pulling on one thread and the whole thing starts unraveling and you, and pretty soon, here we are, you know, trying to figure out a path forward. I think, I think we have a path. Let staff look at this. Maybe even look at different levels, five hundred versus three fifty versus a ceiling, a bottom ceiling at twenty-five. You know, look, explore it a little bit. Have something roughed out so that if and when, if we go to a, back up to a higher level, we're prepared. You know, I don't know how much more we can deliberate other than, I think, I think you have enough direction, city manager Slattery. I, I think we've talked about this forever and it's a really interesting conversation. And, you know, trying to help, you know, hardworking Euricans, but I, I, I think we're good unless somebody thinks differently.
So I feel the same way. I feel that, you know, by having something prepared that we will be ready and can be ready to have an urgency ordinance in place when the time, if, when and if the time comes. And it sounds like that that was the consensus with everybody. So unless, does anybody have a consideration for councilmember Castellano's idea? Everybody? All right, seeing no one. We will move on and invite mayor, thank you, everybody for your conversation. This has been a very interesting and tough process. And I would like to say that I don't think that it's, you know, has to do anything with, that we don't care about our citizens and our people working here, but it has to do a lot with equity, timing, those types of situations in my mind. So, thank you all. And we'll get Mayor Seaman back in here to resume the next portion of the meeting. So if you want to take a quick bathroom break, you can, oh, nope, there she is.
Appears I missed quite a conversation. I will read about it in the paper tomorrow, I am sure. So, are y'all ready to talk about CalPERS unfunded liability? Director Malar, I'm refreshed, you guys. I could go all night. Kim, good councilmember Brigal?
So it is three, it's, I was gonna say it's three minutes to nine thirty. Nine twenty-seven, so it would seem that we would have to probably make a motion at some point to extend the meeting.
Sounds like a good plan. Would somebody like to make that motion?
How much time do you think we need?
Director Malar?
That's been thirty minutes, but twenty minutes?
So if we extended the meeting until ten o'clock, you would let, you would be done in twenty? Oh, then we still have council reports. I'm gonna say ten o'clock.
Second.
Thank you.
Wait, was that a motion?
That we extend the meeting until ten o'clock.
Okay, I second that.
And all who are not in favor of that say aye, and if not, we can, I think, just move forward. All right, let's just go ahead and have Director Malar give us his report.
Hey, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Tonight's presentation is all about the unfunded, unfunded viability. There are three parts to this presentation. The first part is just about, you know, some pension basics. The second part is about unfunded liability funding strategies. And then the third part, which is a very short part, is talking about next steps. So we're gonna begin with some pension basics. In this section, I'm gonna cover the types of memberships and plans. That includes classic versus PEPRA members and safety versus miscellaneous plans. And then we are gonna talk about planned expenses. This includes the normal cost rate and the unfunded accrued viability as well as the discount rate. And the discount rate isn't an expense, but it is directly related to the first two bullet points. And then I have this chart. It's kind of a cheat sheet. It lays out the four different plans that are available at the city of Eureka. We'll come back to this and kind of go through each column. So the start, classic versus PEPRA. The classic members. The classic members, uh, these are employees hired before January first, two thousand thirteen. These employees have a salary cap of two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Uh, that is not specific to the city of Eureka, that is for all members of CalPERS. And then we have, uh, the public employees pension reform act members or PEPRA members. Uh, these are employees hired on or after January first, two thousand thirteen. Uh, these employees have a reduced, or have reduced retirement benefits when compared to the classic members. Uh, they have a salary cap of a hundred and fifty-one thousand. And PEPRA members are required to contribute at least fifty percent of the normal cost. Next, we have two types of plans, we have safety versus miscellaneous. Uh, safety plan, uh, this is available for public safety employees, including police and fire. And then we have a miscellaneous plan, that is for everyone else. So back on the cheat sheet, uh, we've covered, you know, the first column. Uh, the next thing we'll talk about is the benefit formula. Um, so here's an example, we have a group of city employees, we have April, she is a police officer. She was hired back in two thousand ten, so she's a classic member. We have Andy, uh, he's a police recruit. Uh, he's a PEPRA safety member, we have Leslie, uh, she doesn't work in public safety, she's a classic member. In the miscellaneous plan, and then we have Tom, he's a new employee in the PEPRA miscellaneous plan. So I put each one of these people, or each one of these employees into each of the four city of Eureka plans. Uh, we're gonna look at Tom, so Tom's benefit is two at sixty-two. And what does this mean? Well, this is the benefit factor, it means that Tom earns two percent per year, uh, at the age of sixty-two. So for every year that Tom works, he's earning two percent of his salary. And if he retires at the age of sixty-two, uh, he will earn the full benefit factor. To show you how I got to the retirement benefit here on the right side of the screen. Uh, you first take the, the benefit factors, so two percent. You multiply that by the service credit, so thirty years, and then by his final compensation of sixty-five thousand dollars. So you get a total of thirty-nine thousand dollars in retirement benefits. But next we'll move on to planned expenses. Uh, we have the normal cost rate, we have the unfunded accrued liability. And we have the discount rate. So what is a normal cost rate? Uh, this is the assumed long-term contribution rate based on future market returns, employee pay, and demographics. So in simple terms, this is the cost that CalPERS is projecting forward. So they're looking into the future and based on their assumptions, they're deciding how much the employee and the employer have to pay. To maintain the pension fund. Uh, the rate is a percentage of employer and employee pay. Uh, and we do see modest changes from year to year, but, uh, this rate stays relatively flat. Next, we have the focus of the presentation, that is the unfunded liability. You know, this is the difference between a plan's assets and its accrued liability. Uh, if an unfunded liability is positive, meaning that it's more than the assets, the plan will have to make contributions. In excess of the normal cost. UAL costs are not our set dollar amounts, they're not a percentage of pay. And the relationship between a plan's assets and its accrued liability is called the funded ratio. So what this means is if your assets equal your liabilities, you're a hundred percent funded. If your assets are half of what your liabilities are, you are fifty percent funded. So now we've. Uh, we've talked about the normal cost and you can see, uh, the split between the employer and the employee. Uh, if you notice down at the bottom, the miscellaneous PEPRA employees pay exactly what the city pays. And then if you look at the safety police PEPRA plan, you'll notice that the employee is actually paying more than the city. And that's because of what's stated in the MOU. Uh, here we can see the unfunded liability amount per plan. And then we can also see the funded ratio. And now on to the discount rate, so the discount rate is maybe the most important number, uh, CalPERS deals with. Uh, what it is, uh, think of it as a hurdle. So CalPERS sets this rate, this discount rate. And as of today, it's seven percent. So what that means is CalPERS is trying to get a return of at least seven percent per year or in the long run. So it doesn't have to achieve seven percent in any one year, but on average, it has to do at least seven percent. To maintain the fund's financial stability. So a discount rate is the assumed long-term rate of return on the plan's asset. Lower rates have a higher probability of success and provide long-term stability. So a few years ago, uh, CalPERS adopted or had an eight percent discount rate. And with a higher discount rate, that's a higher hurdle. You know, it's easy to get one percent on your money, you can put that in a checking account and get that, but to achieve something in the ten or double digits. Is much harder and you typically face a lot of volatility, so one year you might do fifteen percent and the next year you might have negative returns. So CalPERS is, has lowered the discount rate and is considering lowering it in the future to help sustain the pension fund. So lower rates actually increase the accrued liability. Uh, here I have isolated the miscellaneous plan. And this is a discount rate sensitivity, uh, analysis. Uh, you can see here, or under the current column, uh, the discount rate of seven percent equals a liability of forty-one million dollars. If that discount rate was set at six percent, that liability would go up to fifty-five million dollars. But if in the future, CalPERS is able to achieve eight percent on average, that liability is actually smaller than what we think it is today. And you must be wondering what, you know, how has CalPERS performed? So, uh, my most, or the best data I have right now is as of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, at that, on that date, their one-year return was about six point seven percent, so just under that discount rate. Their five-year year return on that date was five point eight, so even lower. But if you look at a ten-year period, they achieved nine point one percent. So based on that ten-year period, they're actually doing what they need to do. You know, you capture the twenty-year period, now we have the financial crisis or the mortgage crisis. So you would expect that to be a little bit lower, because we typically don't have big economic events like that. But, and then over the thirty-year, you know, or thirty-year history, they've done about eight percent. So they have performed as well as they need to, uh. But it really depends on the, you know, how far back you're looking. Uh, year-to-year changes don't really matter until it becomes a trend, until it becomes a long-term trend. So next we'll move on to unfunded liability funding strategies. Uh, in this section, I will cover a section one fifteen trust. Uh, an alternative amortization schedule. And pension obligation bonds. So a section one fifteen pension pre-funding trust, this is a special investment fund. That can only be used to cover CalPERS costs. And what that means is if you adopt a one fifteen and you contribute monies to that fund. The only thing you can do, or the only way to draw money from that fund. Is to put it towards your normal cost or your unfunded liability payment. It can only be used for that purpose. Uh, the benefit of a one fifteen is that the investment restrictions that apply to the general fund don't apply to a one fifteen. So in, a general fund reserve is limited in what it can invest in. Typically, the products are low risk, which is good, but the returns are very low. With a one fifteen, you can achieve a much higher return, so they are, you know, attractive in that sense. Uh, one fifteens, uh, they increase expenditures in the short term, uh, they don't fund themselves, so you have to fund, find the money to put into them. And if done properly, uh, these things can be used to offset future pension cost volatility. So maybe, you know, it would, you know, down the road a bit, if CalPERS doesn't perform, that's gonna send my UAL upwards. And if I've invested in a one fifteen and it's produced earnings, I can take those earnings and I can offset future CalPERS increases. The next strategy is a, uh, has to do with the amortization schedules. Uh, these are the length of the unfunded liability payback period. Uh, currently, we're on a schedule that ends in, or on June thirtieth, twenty forty-five, twenty-five years from now. Uh, the interest rate on the unfunded liability is the CalPERS discount rate, so they're charging at seven percent. Uh, until we pay back the unfunded liability, which is a pretty high interest rate. Uh, but we do have the option to reduce that term. If we were to reduce the term, say to a fifteen or a ten-year period, uh, that would increase expenditures. The benefit of it would be interest savings. So if you look at this graph, uh, I've graphed, uh, the, you know. The annual CalPERS payment for our unfunded liability, uh, all the way until year twenty-five. That's the green line. Uh, up here I have, uh, if we went to a ten-year payback. The blue line is a fifteen-year payback, and again, the green line is the current, uh, debt service schedule. The difference between the green line and the blue line, or the green line and the orange line is, or reflects how much the payments would increase. So if I'm looking at year ten, where the green line nearly touches the blue line, this difference is about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. You know, that might seem like a large number, but if your annual payment is six million dollars, that is not a big difference. But if I'm looking at the ten-year payback period, uh, that's a two million dollar difference, that might be harder to achieve. Uh, so if we look at interest paid versus the potential savings of adopting a shorter schedule. Uh, and looking at the UAL in total, so that's across all plans, and equals roughly sixty-one million dollars. You can see that the current schedule is the most costly schedule, so we're looking at about forty, forty-nine million dollars over the next twenty-five years. If we don't do anything. If we adopt a fifteen-year plan, we only pay thirty-six million in interest and can save up to twelve and a half million dollars. If somehow we find the money to do a ten-year plan, that's only twenty-three and a half million in interest, and we save over twenty-five million dollars. The next strategy is our pension obligation bonds. Uh, this is bond debt issued to fund the unfunded portion of a pension liability. Interest rates on POBs can be lower than the CalPERS, than the rate CalPERS charges. Bonds can also achieve interest savings by reducing the payback term, kind of like the strategy we just, or I just presented. Uh, POBs can reduce expenditures in the short term, meaning that if we were to go down this road, we could potentially save money right off the bat. I wouldn't increase expenditures, I would actually probably see a saving. Uh, that savings can be used to fund section one fifteens. But POBs involve a considerable amount of investment risk. And these decisions should not be taken lightly, they should be made after, you know, a careful analysis of what is the best option for the city of Eureka. Uh, there is one more thing, or one more strategy technically, and that is do nothing. You know, I'm saying this because until this year. Uh, we have not had the ability to actually do any of these strategies. Uh, our financial forecast is very positive as of today because of Measure H. And the interest rate environment is, uh, very favorable to doing something like a POV. So, you know, we can continue to go down the same road, or we could take advantage of these options that are not now available to the city of Eureka. Uh, so on to my last and final section is creating a action plan. Um, so these are really what I think are the next steps in this process. Uh, first is to work with an advisor. Uh, so recently, uh, I had the firm PFM reach out to me. Uh, they were interested in helping us identify ways to refinance some of our utility bonds. And we've worked with them in the past, so I decided to, you know, I, I am interested in refinancing the utility bonds, it's just something you do. When interest rates are this low, so I've asked them to help us analyze our unfunded liability. Uh, they, they do have a history with the city. Uh, they worked with us back in two thousand seventeen to refinance some of the bonds with the successor agency. So I will be inviting them to the next council meeting to help us look at our options. Uh, I'm hoping that they can help evaluate the different options. That I, you know, I presented tonight, and then they can help us craft a financing strategy. So this concludes my presentation tonight, I don't think that went twenty minutes, so. There are any questions, uh, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
All right, anybody have questions, councilmember Castellano?
Um. It's all kind of interesting, uh, I'm just curious, can you, can you mix and match, like, for instance, could you, you know, like. Like pay more in terms of, you know, like, adopt a, for instance, like a fifteen-year payback plan? And then, you know, do the. Like pension obligation funds for the, for the rest, anyway, or something like that?
Yeah, potentially, I mean, you could do, there are lots and lots of options by mixing and matching. And that's why I need an advisor to kind of help us model this and tell us what the most, uh, rational route would be.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Would working with a, a specific advisor tie us to some kind of, um, financial obligation to them, or what does that look like?
Uh, not beyond the consulting fees to help us.
Okay. Okay, great, I wasn't sure if it's like, long-term investment advice for ten years or something.
Council, I mean, city manager Slattery.
Yeah, and it won't just be PFM, and we've already reached out to people for section one fifteen and CalPERS to have discussions with them as well.
Any other questions?
So I'd like to, I'd like to mention that the world of these financial advisors is kind of a rarefied world, I mean, they're very. Uh, they're very expert, uh, at looking at all of the different, you know, gears and wheels that are involved in a financing like this. And they would be joined if council chooses to do the pension obligation bond route, if that looks like most advisable to you, at least in part. Um, there would also be bond counsel, that is another, uh, is a legal specialty of a rarefied sort. Um, and so we would have in both roles, I think, top-of-the-line advisors. And so we would have in both roles, I think, top-of-the-line advisors.
Any other questions on this? Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, thank you, Lane, for bringing this up. I mean, I just want to say. You see the articles in the paper about this, like, we could just magically get out of CalPERS or something. It's, it's gonna sink us. But I think we're doing well. This is an obligation that we have to do, and rightly so, for those that work for us, you know? So it's exciting that we're trying to, you know, increase the financial security of the city, of our CalPERS obligation. I'm excited we're working on this, so thanks.
Councilmember Castellano.
And is there any talk of, like, larger structural reform at the state? Or is it, does it seem like we're kind of in? In, in it now? Like, like this is how it's gonna be?
Um, you know, some of the best reform is reducing that discount rate. But once you do that, you increase expenses for all the members. So it's kind of hard, you know? I think what CalPERS is trying to do is not do anything too quickly. Because they could, you know, adopt a lower rate, but that might put cities in, you know, an awkward position where they can't make their pension payments. You know, Peppera is, was the big change to the system. You know, that only happened a number of years ago. And it's gonna take a while to convert our employees from classic numbers to Peppera. But I believe already today, we're about fifty-fifty. So, I mean, that's, that's happened pretty quickly, so it's just kind of getting through the next twenty or thirty years. And if we do something like this, I think, you know, the outlook is very, very positive. I actually don't think that, you know, a 401K or something like that would necessarily be cheaper. You know, looking at what our Peppera employees are paying. We don't pay into social security either, so. You know, I, I think, you know, we just need to take care of this unfunded liability. And we will be in a very good spot. I mean, you, you notice that, you know, after year ten or year fifteen, that's, you know, millions of dollars that are now available. You know, across all funds. So, yeah, just getting ahead of it will, you know, put us in an even stronger position than where we're at today.
So kind of found, I see, yeah, Councilmember Moulton, Texas, wanted to come out so quickly. Oh, was that a hand waving? Oh, okay. Um. What Councilmember Castellano just said reminded me, I think it was maybe as soon as Governor Newsom got in. He did give schools, I believe, a break on theirs, some kind of a budgetary allocation to pay for theirs. I'm wondering, we're doing very well after the pandemic, but other cities are really, really struggling. And so I'm wondering if there's any discussion to use any funds to help municipalities at the state level. We haven't heard anything about that.
I mean, I, I don't, or I haven't heard anything. I don't expect that. The liabilities are so big that there's no one to, or, you know, they can't backfill everybody. And they can only kick the can. They're not gonna pay your pension cost for you. They might help you finance it over a longer period, which can actually hurt the member more than help. And also, you know, having other, you know, we want other people to participate in the CalPERS system because it helps everyone. You know, we need, we need more members. To participate so that there's people coming in that are paying for the, you know, contributions of the retirees.
I think it just really made me feel incredibly sympathetic for the communities who already have so much financial burden. From PERS, and now they have the pandemic stuff. Uh, Council, or City Manager Slattery, were you gonna say something?
I was just gonna make a quick comment. The, the federal funding, the stimulus money, I don't know what parameters are for that. But it did talk about potentially, you know, lost revenues, and you can use this for lost revenues. So I mean, for some communities, I don't know if it'll be allowed. That money could maybe go towards pension costs. I don't know that yet, but it may be.
I thought I remembered seeing something that specifically said you can't use it for that, but I, I don't remember.
Yeah, I haven't seen.
I never trust my own memory until I read it again.
I don't think the guidelines have been defined yet, but that could.
Um, do we have any other questions? If not, is anybody, oh, it looks like we lost our one audience member, so it looks like we don't have anybody in the audience who wants to speak. All right, I'll bring it back for comments. And are we just receiving the report today? So, um, so we don't have to make a motion for that. Bob, was that a hand up to say something, or was that just movement?
I'm not sure what that was, but it wasn't to say something.
Um, everybody's getting a little, you know, needs to move. All right, are we ready to call this received and move on to council reports? Actually, no, City Manager reports. I heard Miles has a long one tonight.
I've had a special twenty-minute presentation on workforce comp, and I think I'll hold off until the next meeting.
Did you really have anything that you wanted to let us know?
Just a quick thing, Fortuna, everybody should be thanking Fortuna. They have some, their COVID money for CV two and three that are coming to them. They have generously allowed us to utilize half of that along in partnership with Arcata. So we're gonna be receiving an extra two hundred thousand dollars to go to some of our programs. We'll come back next meeting with an MOU related to that. But if you know anybody in Fortuna, especially City Manager Perry, pat him on the back and say thank you.
I, wow, that sounds very nice. I will find out more about that. I'm looking forward to learning more about it. All right, council reports. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Moulton because she is in the top of my screen.
I don't have any city-related travel. Surprise, surprise. I just wanted to take a real quick moment to remind people that if they were signed up to get notification about their vaccine eligibility. There's a new system, myturn.ca.gov. If you were signed up in the old system, go sign up in the new system. So that you can get your appointment when it's your turn, which should be for everybody over sixteen pretty soon. Be very exciting.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano.
All right. Made a list, but I don't know. It seems excessive now. Generally, continuing to work on housing and issues around who don't have access to housing. So attending meetings related to that. Oh, I was invited by Connie Stewart to, to speak at the Women in Leadership meeting. Last Saturday, so that was, that was kind of fun, just to talk with some other. Michelle Vassal and Maggie Fleming spoke to, and I, you know, I learned a lot from their experiences and speaking as well, so that was really exciting. Participating in the HWMA Hiring Committee was interesting. And attending redec meetings, the, oh, we had a great regional arts leadership meeting with, with representation from Del Norte, Trinity, Mendocino Counties. Along with Humboldt and Anne Bown Crawford from the, who used to live here, who's the director of the CAC, the California Arts Council, came. And so that was really nice to see her, and she had just lots of great information. I, and I want to just give a shout out to Donna Wood, because I attended the Solid Waste Local Task Force meeting. And I just appreciate all of her work around organizing those meetings and SB thirteen eighty-three and, and. And then, yeah, and also have been kind of meeting with staff and economic development to organize for outdoor performance spaces. You know, in Eureka and around the county. And it may all be moot point now that the reopening guidelines drastically changed today. But, you know, I, I think just that practice of organizing together and really thinking about how different community groups can come together to advocate for one another in response to the pandemic or things like this has been really useful. And then attended a kind of meeting around neighborhood beautification with Robin Fasker. With the, with the city, and we're kind of working on a fun, a fun pilot project, which I'll announce more about later.
All right. Councilmember Bergel.
Ross Park could be a great venue for a concert, just saying. So I wanted to bring forward just information about AB one three four four. That is the bill for the loss of local control for syringe exchange programs. So I talked to Assemblymember Jim Wood yesterday. Basically, what the, what the bill would bring forward is complete loss of local control in our region, which we have lived with and lived through barely. Nuisance abatement in neighborhoods would not be able to happen with this new bill. And there would be a CEQA exclusion. So he, when I talked to him on the phone, he was gonna vote yes. But thank you to our community who made a lot of phone calls and made a lot of emails. He pulled that item, and we'll be looking at that and massaging it a little bit further. So I have his phone number. It's nine one six three one nine two thousand two. AB one three four four, please call and express your opinions about regain, retaining our local control over SEPS. We need SEPS, but we also need to retain local control. That's critical to our community health, in my opinion. And then just for fun, Six Rivers Running Club has started up their in-person events. Hallelujah, finally. So we attended our first event in the Arcata Community Forest. Couple, well, I guess it was last Saturday or the Saturday before. It was pure hell, but it was amazingly awesome. So what a gift. Those hills are incredible. And then I attended the Pack Out Green Team cleanup, which I do regularly. I really appreciate. You know, we, we honored volunteers tonight, and there's a whole group of people in that regard that are out there all the time. Making our community a cleaner and safer place, and I really, I appreciate all the work that they do. And then we had another equity meeting with the fire department. They're very good. They're very interesting. And I look forward to having a training coming up very soon with that. More to come, and. That's all.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bauer.
I was totally unprepared. No. I attended a meeting of Redwood Coast Energy Authority, and there was a really interesting discussion on biomass energy. If you're at all interested in how our community is trying to achieve, you know, sustainable energy use and, and address climate change. Please attend sometime. Also attended a joint powers authority meeting. It's very interesting, and that's, you know, basically our fire departments. And I met with some community members, talked about housing. Some members talked about transportation and also about the safe needle exchange that Councilmember Bergel was talking about in AB thirteen forty-four. So that's about it for me for the past couple of weeks. Thanks.
All righty, and Councilmember Arroyo.
I'm sorry, I'm too sleepy to function anymore. I'll have a better report next time. I just hit a big wall.
Well, it's ten oh four, so officially four minutes over.
Yes, I'm trying to keep us on time.
Thank you. That is it. So thank you very much, everybody, and we will see you in a couple of weeks. Bye-bye.